Right now. So, item one, study session on city of San Carlos subdivision standards. There is a staff presentation on that.
My name is Lisa Porras. I am the principal planner for the city of San Carlos, and I will be giving the presentation that makes up the study session. As the agenda indicates, this study session is a two-part study session, and this was done intentionally because we have standards that are contained in our zoning ordinance and standards that are contained in our subdivision ordinance. And I wanted to separate out the two. Any of you who have worked with city codes, or maybe you've done your own research as part of this know they can be kind of complex and a little bit layered, and we want to try and make this as clear as possible for you. The purpose of this study session basically is a result of direction that staff has received from both the planning commission and your city council. And basically, the reason why we received this direction is because there's been several residents, or many residents, in the community who have started to express concerns about lots being subdivided in their neighborhoods, as well as reaction to some of the new homes that have been approved in their neighborhood and starting to wonder if houses are becoming too large. So that is the reason why we are here tonight. There is no recommendation associated with this study session. This is really the first time we are getting together and discussing these standards. I should correct myself, though, because back in 2011, and I'll touch upon that, there were many workshops and a lot of outreach done when the city updated its zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as well. So some of this may be new to you, or maybe you were part of those discussions as well. But certainly with the way the economy is and the way the housing market is, we are starting to see a lot of development activity occur within our neighborhood. So it's not really a surprise that, you know, you're here tonight and wondering how these standards work and what those results basically amount to in your neighborhood. So I'll go ahead and get started. Before I do that, I just wanted to mention, sorry I didn't follow up on this. If anyone is interested in a staff report, I know there were some copies left along the backside of the room there. Feel free to see me, get in touch with me, and I can make sure to send you electronic copies of the reports if you're interested in getting one. For any of you that are here tonight because you received a public notice, there is a correction that I'd like to make on the notice. In the notice, it said we are meeting with the city council in June. That is incorrect. That was a mistake on my part, and actually, the city council will hear this matter on July 11th. So if you're interested in attending that meeting or writing your council members, that will be on July 11th. So let's go ahead and get started. The first set of standards that I would like to talk to you about are the city subdivision So back in 2011, when the city of San Carlos was updating its zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance was required to be amended as well. And the reason for this, and this is stated in the report, if you have a copy, was in order for the subdivision ordinance to be consistent with the changes and the standards that were reflected within the zoning ordinance. And all of this was largely to implement the city's new 2030 general plan that was recently adopted in 2009. So when the city and its consultants worked together to update the zoning ordinance and put standards in place for that, and recognizing the minimum lot size that was within the zoning ordinance, they wanted to update the subdivision ordinance as well. So with that, there were two primary changes. The first had to do with lot size, and the second had to do with lot width. So within that section, these are the two new modifications that were made that is basically allowing single-family lots to be subdivided into two. And this is located in Title 17 of the municipal code under the design requirements. So essentially, what occurred is a minimum lot width was changed from 50 feet to 40 feet. So minimum lot width is essentially the least amount of width a lot is required to have. And the other modification allowed a change to a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. And these changes essentially occurred again because the city, through its general plan process, and part of the themes that emanated from the zoning ordinance update was really to look at ways to support urban infill. There was a recognition that there was a desire for additional housing variety, different housing typologies, bungalows, different types of residential typologies, and that's the general theme that arose out of this. And also, there had been a longstanding precedent for existing lots having a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The reason for the change in the lot, in the minimum lot width, was to, was basically out of recognition for many of the city's pre-existing lots that were of a narrower size. So to keep those on par with some standards that larger lots could afford with respect to possibilities for additions, improvements to the property, the city wanted to make those, codify those to become the new standards for subdivisions. So if we take a look at the changes that were made, really, again, there were really only two. If we look at the first row, existing lots in the city, again, for many, many years, were set at a standard of 5,000 square feet with the minimum lot width of 50 feet. The change that was made was with respect to lot width, so it reduced it by 10 feet to 40 feet, and again, that was in recognition of the many narrower lot sizes. And then with respect to lots that had 0 to 19.9% slope, those lots were allowed to be modified, under the previous code prior to 2011. If you had a lot that was generally flat, that was 10,000 square feet or more, you couldn't subdivide it. And so with the modification, it was basically allowed to, it allowed a relatively flat lot to be subdivided into similar-sized lots within, in various neighborhoods throughout the city. So again, recognition of the pre-existing 5,000-square-foot lot standard, but with an adjustment to reduce the minimum lot size to 40 feet. And then, of course, lots that have a higher degree of slope to them were required to be larger. So as you can see, as you move down the different rows, lots that had more topography on them were required to be 12,000 square feet. And the remaining sections of the zoning ordinance didn't change. So it was really only for lots that were 0 to 19.9% slope that were allowed to be subdivided as small as 5,000 square feet. So what have we seen since 2011? Well, we've seen that there have been six subdivisions approved. These occurred, as you can see here right on the map, not in any particular clustered location, but really kind of spread out throughout the city. Some near our downtown, some in the midtown neighborhoods, and then some closer to Highway The question that a lot of people are probably asking and have asked, so we anticipated this question, is, well, how many more lots could be subdivided? So we had our, some assistants from our GIS crew run a query through our mapping applications to come up with how many lots are equivalent to 10,000 square feet or greater that would have potentially, or I should say, potentially have the ability to subdivide into smaller lots. So if you look at this map, it's, the colors are basically representative of the city's two different zoning districts for residential homes. Within San Carlos, our primary resident, single-family residential zoning districts are the RS3, which is a lower density, and then our RS6. And as you can see on the map, RS6 is shown in blue, and RS6 is by far the area that has the zoning district most, by far the largest single-family zoning district in the city. The parcels shown in the dark blue are parcels that are 10,000 square feet or more. So out of the roughly 8,000 different single-family parcels that are within the city, these darker shades represent the parcels that are 10,000 square feet or greater. Now, whether they are actual candidates for subdivision remains to be seen, because not only is there lot size, as I just mentioned, there also is a lot width requirement. There also is a requirement that they be, that they can actually, you know, subdivide into 5,000-square-foot lots if they have 0 to 19.9% slope. Some of these might have a high degree of slope, which means they would not be able to be subdivided into smaller lot sizes, and they all have to have street access. So you can't, you know, subdivide property and have it be landlocked. So there's a number of filters that lots have to go through in order to determine whether or not they can be subdivided. So this is our initial output, just based upon size alone. And while we had hoped to provide additional information on lot width, that level of study actually takes quite a bit of time, even though there are computer applications that can assist us with that. The results are not in yet, but we expect to have those in for our city council presentation. So the next filter that we will put these through will be on lot width.
So Lisa, I don't want rank speculation, but do we have any sense whatsoever? I mean, like, any sense as to how many lots are actually splitable?
Well, we won't know that until we do some additional analysis for which parcels would meet the minimum lot width requirement, and then of those, we'd want to see which lots have, how much topography there would be on those lots. And, you know, in our, in the staff report, it indicates, I believe, there's about 1,100 lots that meet the minimum size requirement. So it's, the analysis takes a little bit longer to do, and, you know, I don't expect that this is, will be our first or last conversation on the matter. But just if we're looking just at lot size alone, there are about over 1,000. The other factor that comes into play for subdivision has to do with lot shapes. You know, not every lot is going to be, have a perfect geometry to it. The nature of our land is very organic. We have hills and slopes and curvilinear streets, so you're going to get a lot of unique parcel shapes, and some of you may have property on some of these unique parcel shapes. So this is just an example of a lot that is irregularly shaped, and it remains to be seen whether or not this could subdivide. It is a lot that's 10,000 square feet or greater, but depending upon how you split the land, whether or not it will meet the minimum lot width requirements could be one factor that would prevent it from subdividing. So to really kind of get at the question, how many more lots could there be, it does take a little bit of work, but we, staff is actively working to see how far we can get through the analysis. You know, analyzing each parcel out of the 1,000 would take an extraordinary amount of time, but again, there are some computer applications that we can use to get a sense of what that might be. So again, that's forthcoming. Throughout this conversation, and because of some concerns that we've heard from some residents, some residents, we included a section in our, in our report about flag lots. Some community members have asked us whether the city permits flag lots, under what conditions might they be permitted, and do other cities allow flag lots? Well, this diagram here is a diagram that is taken out of our very own zoning ordinance, so this is from San Carlos, and it's a diagram just depicting the number of various lot sizes and types. So as you can see in the diagram, we have corner lots, we have lots that are interior, we have lots that are through lots, where there may be two front yards, of course. You can't build with two fronts, but you'd have to choose one or the other, and there's a process for figuring that out. And there's also, as you can see, outlined in red, what constitutes a flag lot. Now, when subdividing lots and creating lots of the various different shapes and sizes that they may result in, there are standings, findings, excuse me, for approval. So while some projects and lot splits may meet numeric standards, there is a series of findings that are associated with every permit that is issued by the city, and in particular, if we're talking about flag lots, one of the findings that staff would need to make would be whether the size and shape of the proposed lots are in general conformance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and the general pattern of the neighborhood. So this is something that is carefully evaluated by staff, should these applications come forward to the city. As I mentioned previously, there are findings to approve a subdivision. So the subdivision approval process essentially consists of review by the planning commission. So for lots, for any subdivisions that amount in four parcels or less, that action is taken on by the city's planning commission, which is this lovely group here before us this evening. And then we have 10 findings to approve land division, one of which is the one I just mentioned previously. Should a land division be approved or disapproved, there is a 10-day right of appeal, and any appeals on subdivisions are forwarded to the city council for their review. And the city council is the final decision-making for any kind of project that gets appealed all the way up to city council. The other thing that we were expecting is people want to know, well, how does San Carlos compare to other cities? And as the reports indicate, we have had some members or some, actually, some assistance from members in our community who have also started looking up that very information and have gathered their own data and probably organized it, maybe similar to what is shown here, or maybe a little bit differently. And I know there will be public comment letter, and I know there are a couple of presentations that community members want to make on themselves. So if we look at San Carlos as compared to other cities, again, San Carlos has a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, provided that it's on a lot not less than 20% slope. We know our minimum lot width is 40 feet. And for any lots that have a higher degree of topography, the requirement for their size goes up. And we already know that flag lots could be approved if they meet the findings for approval. In the city of Belmont, next door, their minimum lot sizes is 5,000 square feet for existing lots. For lots that are proposed to be subdivided, their minimum lot size is a little bit larger at 6,000 square feet. They have a requirement that anything over a 10% slope would require a larger parcel size. Their minimum lot width is a little bit larger, and as mentioned to the far right, their lot size is regulated by slope. So if you have a 12% slope, you're required to have a 6,400-square-foot lot, and it goes on from there. Their code specifically prohibits flag lots. If we go the other direction toward Redwood City, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet, again, larger than San Carlos, but again, provided that that division occurs on a relatively flat piece of land. Their lot width, like Belmont, is also 50 feet, and again, they have regulations based upon lot slopes. The difference in parcel sizes, I guess, has a much tighter correlation to the amount of topography. So while the city of San Carlos has the same requirement, ours doesn't really kick in until it's 20% or more. In Palo Alto, their minimum lot size is also at the 6,000 square feet. Their minimum lot width is larger, though, at 60 feet, and they have a provision, however, that for any lot that is 83% of their minimum lot size, again, which is 6,000 square feet, you can only build a single story. So I thought that was an interesting layer of regulation. I didn't really see that in any of the other cities that I looked at, but if their lot sizes were 83, again, 83% of the minimum, then you could only build a single story. In San Carlos, we allow two stories, provided, again, you meet the findings and you meet the numeric standards, you can have a two-story home on any RS6 lot that is in the city. Again, meet the findings, meet the zoning requirements.
Lisa, that's not related to subdivided homes, right? Because the smallest subdivision is 6,000 square feet, right? So that would only be to existing lots?
That would be applied to existing lots, exactly. There was a lot of pieces of data in here. I just thought that might be interesting. I guess that could have gone into development standards, but that's a good clarification. So Menlo Park has the largest, out of the cities that we looked at, minimum lot size requirement at 7,000 square feet. They have the largest minimum lot width, and other than that, they have, I know they have other development standards, but again, we're just talking about subdivision regulations. In the city of San Mateo, it's similar to San Carlos with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, 50-foot lot width, but they specifically prohibit any kind of subdivision that would result in a flag lot. So that concludes the basic, I know I kind of went through this fast and maybe in a simplistic way, but this is just to begin the conversation to see how, what's, so that everyone can understand what San Carlos regulations are and see how we compare, start comparing to other cities and the potential for additional subdivisions within the city. I could move on to development standards, but if you would like to pause and just directly take questions on subdivisions now, we can do that, or do everything at the end. I have a feeling most of the people here want to comment on both.
Yeah, actually, most of the speaker cards are on both, so why don't we continue with the second part, and then we can get into public comment.
Findings are, are the statutory factual, findings is the word I'm thinking of, but the factual basis for a decision that the planning commission might make. So in our statute, in our code, we have findings that need to be made for each application for consideration by the planning commission, and under the law, it's binding that the commission be able to make all of the findings for compatibility with the neighborhood or, you know, whatever the four or five listed findings are. And it depends on what the application is, and the findings can be different for a use permit versus a design review versus a subdivision. So hopefully that answers your question.
And I'll talk a little bit about those, not, there's a list of them. There's a longer list for design review than there is for subdivision, and I'll talk about some of the ones for design review approval as part of this presentation. So the next part of the study session is going to move on to development standards. And development standards are the regulations you, it's, this is the terminology we use that basically guides the construction of new homes. It tells you where homes need to be placed on the lot, how tall they It tells you where homes need to be placed on the lot, how tall they can be, and a lot of other factors in terms of how homes need to be oriented, the amount of fenestration, articulation, and so forth. We call those development standards. So going back to the 2011 zoning ordinance update, if we look at development standards just for single-family residential, there were some changes made. There were a lot of changes with respect to how homes needed to be designed, but in terms of the basic bulk mass housing placement, et cetera, there were three primary changes that were made to single-family residential. And one was lot coverage. The other was the rear yard setback was reduced. So lot coverage was increased, rear yard setback was reduced, and there were some new provisions for where garages needed to be placed relative to the property line and relative to the front facade of a new home. So some of the objectives that came up through stakeholders and discussions with the community is, you know, what did they really want to see with the changes made in the zoning ordinance? Well, it was very clear that the community wanted high-quality design, hence the requirement for design review. Not all communities have design review to review single-family homes. San Carlos does, as you all are aware. The other objective within the zoning ordinance was to look at ways that promote infill. So infill is kind of, you know, new development that occurs in already established neighborhoods through the course of change, people doing additions, whether that's in the downtown, new development downtown, as well as in, in actually some of the residential neighborhoods, how that change would occur, and what are some ways that the city could look at in order to promote infill, recognizing the need that housing will always and continually be a need in, in the community. The other factor that came up, or theme that came up, was looking at ways, well, how do you, how could the city streamline the review and approval process? Prior to our, that zoning ordinance that we have today, the previous code, you could say wasn't, you know, very user-friendly. There were a lot of opportunities to improve the language, make it more clear which projects would have to go before the city's design review committees, which projects would not. So that was a goal of the update. And then finally, another item that rose to the surface was looking at ways to make the zoning as clear as it could be, but as concise as it can be, make it be understandable and then easy to use. And this is not just for architects and builders, but also for homeowners, because homeowners are the very ones that start looking at the ordinance, work with architects, and want to better understand the possibilities for how they could make improvements to their homes. So with all of that in mind, that pretty much drove the modifications that were made to the zoning ordinance. So if we go, if we begin with the changes first, let's, let's go ahead and start with the rear yard setback. The prior code required a rear yard setback that would be anywhere between 15 to 19, to 19 feet from the rear property line. And basically, the way the code was written is that you could have your house as close as 15 feet from the rear property line for the first 20 feet in height, and then thereafter, you had to push it back up to 19 feet. So the higher you went up in height, the more you had to push back that particular massing of the rear yard setback. With the modifications in 2011, the city simplified that and, and stated that the rear yard setback could be 15, whether that's for the first or second story, they could align. Now, when I say align, that doesn't mean you just can build a straight wall up. There are other provisions in the code that require the elevations to have articulation and some, you know, relief to them, so it's not just a blank wall. But overall, the primary massing could be 15 feet away from the property line. With respect to minimum lot coverage, I know most of you already know this, but the, the change allowed an increase from 40% to 50%. So what lot coverage is, if you can think about it, is the footprint of the building on the lot, and that would include, you know, a second dwelling unit, accessory structures over a certain amount and height. So all of the coverage that occurs on the lot, you know, you can do no more than 50%. That was a change that was made in 2011. As I mentioned previously, the other modification that was made, and this was actually new, was to, well, actually, the garage from the property line wasn't new, garage from the front facade was new. So the garage from the property line actually increased. So the prior code allowed you to place your garage as close as 18 feet to the front property line, with the new revisions that required it to be pushed back a little bit further to 20 feet. And in addition to that, and in combination with it, was a standard that was created to minimize the appearance of garages from the public right-of-way, recognizing that, you know, the, the level of urban design and, you know, the quality of life and the look and feel and character of neighborhoods is largely dependent upon the built environment. The city made a conscious decision to require that the garages be pushed back so that the primary elevations could have more of a presence and, and be seen more clearly, that they're celebrated more, more than you would want to celebrate a garage door. So these changes were made to promote flexibility, again, allowing property owners to have some flexibility to do additions. This included even property owners with smaller lots. So that was the reason why the minimum, or the maximum lot coverage was modified. They wanted, we wanted to clarify the rules. There were, there were some slight modifications to side yard setbacks, but essentially, the only change that was made was the way that they were described. Essentially, they amounted to the same type of setback. So we have setbacks for the first story and also for the second story. They also were intended to lead to overall better design. So with the addition of supplemental standards to address building articulation, the design of the front porch, the amount of paving that could occur in front of the property, all of that was intended to lead to better design. And then again, as I mentioned, increasing lot coverage to allow property owners with smaller lots some flexibility to do, to make some improvements with their home. The other thing that changed was with respect to design guidelines. So prior to the zoning ordinance update, there were some design elements contained in the zoning ordinance. These design elements were essentially used as factors to help decision-makers determine if a project was compatible. So a new housing, a new house would, would, was required to be compatible with existing, with the existing neighborhoods with special intention made to the adjacent properties. So how do you determine if a project is compatible? Well, that's a subjective term. So the zoning ordinance had some items included within it that helped decision-makers be able to make that finding. So in order to determine if a project was compatible, included nine different factors, and these are listed in the report. I'll mention just a few. The building design features, the building has design features that address height and bulk, such as roof angles, breaking up, angles, breaking up the vertical massing to blend with the site or topography. It also included designing the building in a way where it appeared to have a series of segments as opposed to a single massive structure, using bays, doors, and windows, bays, and doorways to break up the massing, using landscaping as a way to screen and soften the view of the building. So if, if a housing development had these components in it, that could be used as a way to determine whether a project was compatible, so you could make that particular finding. So what changed in 2011 is that the city and consultants in the community took these design elements and expanded them further so that they would address not just single-family development, but all new development as well. So in the city zoning ordinance, you'll find design review criteria, and again, projects need to be found consistent with the design review criteria to the extent that they apply. And most applicable, of all these design review criteria, the most applicable criteria include two, and I'll go ahead and read those. The first is that the overall design of the project, including its scale, massing, the site plan, exterior design, and landscaping will enhance the appearance and features of the project site and the surrounding natural and built environment. The second one is the project has been designed to be compatible with neighboring development by avoiding big differences in building scale and character between developments on adjoining lots in the same zoning district and providing a harmonious transition in scale and character between different, different, different districts. So while the numerical standards in the code are often used first, most probably, by homeowners and builders, there still is the design review criteria and other findings that need to be made in order to get design review approval for your new home. So in terms of how projects get reviewed, which projects go before the city's design review committee, which is the residential design review committee, or the RDRC, the code provides that all new homes are required to be reviewed by the RDRC. Any type of addition that basically results in a residence greater than 3,000 square feet tied to a particular lot size. And, and in addition, the city has a standard that basically ties the amount of cross-slope to a floor area ratio. This is where it gets a little bit technical, but a lot of times, people have mistaken that, the idea that the city has FAR. The city only uses a floor area ratio as, as a review authority threshold. So if your project is 3,000 square feet and you have a certain amount of slope to your property and your FAR results in a certain amount, you're going to the RDRC. And this is basically a sliding scale that the city uses to evaluate projects to determine if they will be reviewed by staff or whether they will be presented to a three-member design review committee. A lot of this was contained in the previous zoning ordinance, and it was carried forward into the ordinance that we have today. So the design review process always begins with early outreach to the neighborhood. Any homeowner, developer, applicant who comes to our planning counter just outside this room and wants to start the process, staff always instructs them to begin first by reaching out to the neighborhood. Applicants are required to provide documentation as with a lot, with their application submittal package so that staff knows what type of outreach they have done. Oftentimes, neighbors will submit response forms to the city, so we receive those. So essentially, that's how the process begins. The applicant is also required to fill out neighborhood character worksheets so that they pause on what they're doing and kind of take a look at what's happening in the neighborhood with respect to existing development around the project site. When the project is completed its review by staff and is ready to be presented to the RDRC, all property owners within 150 feet of the project site are notified so that they can attend or submit written comments if they choose to do so. We hold a public hearing, public comment is taken, a decision is made, and there's always a 10-day right of appeal. For any projects that are reviewed by the RDRC, they go before the city's planning commission. And if they should get appealed by any planning commission decision, then they get reviewed by the city council. So how do our standards compare with other cities? This chart is, is also provided in the staff report that you received, but in sum, San Carlos does not differ too much with respect to height and some front, side, and rear setbacks. Where we do differ, however, has to do with our lot coverage standard, the fact that we do not have a maximum house size, and the fact that we do not have a floor area ratio. So if we look at the bottom of this table, the last three rows cover the standards of lot coverage, max size, and floor area ratio. So again, San Carlos maximum lot coverage is 50%. In other cities, it's lower. In other cities, it's not specified. However, there are other standards that those cities use that govern the size of homes. So if we look down at the next row, we can see maximum house size, for example, in the city of Belmont can be as small as 3,500 square feet or up to 4,500 square feet. In Palo Alto, they set it at 6,000 square feet. And with respect to floor area ratio, San Carlos does not have a standard limiting the floor area ratio. Again, floor area ratio is only used to determine whether your project will go to RDRC or not. So as far as floor area ratio is concerned, the city of Belmont has it, Palo Alto has it, San Mateo has it, and Menlo Park has it as well. So since 2011, a total of 55 new homes were approved. This is not necessarily brand-new homes, but are, but are basically replacement homes throughout the city. And again, as this map is showing, just like subdivisions, so there's not one geographic area where this is occurring, it essentially is occurring throughout the city in the various different neighborhoods of San Carlos.
Do we know whether any of those houses were single-story or whether they were all two-story?
We haven't looked that up. But if you would like us to, you can always make requests for additional information. So when we looked at homes that were permitted within the recent years, we looked at what was done in 2014, 2015, and to date in 2016. We basically were able to create a calculation that told us what the average size of these new, new homes were. So in 2014, the average house size that was being, that was approved by the city was 3,913. In 2015, it's a little bit larger at 4,180. And this year so far, the average house size is 4,165 square feet.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but does this include the garage sizes?
It's, yes, it's everything.
Thank you.
And so we selected, you know, we also wanted to see, well, what, you know, what were the sizes of homes being built, you know, prior to the 2011 update? And we just selected a few years randomly. There's nothing special about 2006 or 2007. We can always collect more and more data, but just as an example, we picked 2006 and 2007, and we decided not to do an average because there really wasn't much approved. In 2006, there was one new home that was approved that came in at 3,358. In 2007, there were three new homes, and so you can see at the table at the bottom the size of homes that came in during that particular year. The other question that we started, that staff started to get asked was, well, how do our development standards influence architectural design? You know, what type of styles could or could not be approved under the regulations that the city has? Here's just two examples of different house styles. These are not in San Carlos, they're just Google images that anyone can pull up if you Google New England Colonial and, or Craftsman. So essentially, in San Carlos, we have requirements for setbacks for the first and second stories. So first story needs to be set back a minimum of five feet from the side property lines, and the second story, if you're going to build one, needs to be pulled in nine feet from the side property lines. So the question is, would that prevent, for example, the house on the left from being built? Because as you can see, you know, the side elevations are, you know, in one, you know, vertical plane. The code requires, our code requires a minimum of one vertical break and a minimum of one horizontal break in a side elevation. So if you're going to construct a home that is similar to the appearance to the one on the left, you would need to, at minimum, bring both the first and second stories in nine feet from the property line, and you would probably need to do further articulation on that elevation. So most of the time, what we do see are second-story homes being built with a five-story setback on the, side setback on the first floor and a nine-second-story setback on the second floor. I think within the past several years, we've only had one project that was approved as a, as a single story. But most of the home designs that we see being submitted by homeowners and architects or home designers are the ones that are similar to Craftsman whereby they're kind of bringing the second story in. San Carlos doesn't prescribe a particular architectural style. We see a lot more contemporary-style homes being submitted and approved. What we do really care about is that the building is sufficiently What we do really care about is that the building is sufficiently articulated, that it meets the setbacks, that it meets the findings for approval, and that there is high-quality materials being used in whatever design is chosen by a homeowner. Again, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions when the commission is ready.
Thank you, Lisa. So I'm going to start with Christian's presentation. Do you guys have a sequence that you guys want to follow?
We do. I'd like to follow. There are some people who want to speak to specific, the impact of large homes in specific ways. What I'd like to present is a good cap to that, so if it's all right with Chairperson DeMata.
Okay. That's fine. So with that, the first speaker card is Joanna Umbrosio.
Thank you. When we first moved to San Carlos, we've lived here over 30-some years, and when we needed a larger home, we decided still to stay here, and we found a wonderful home on Carmelita, the 1900 block. And one of the things that recently happened is a developer came in and purchased a property on the corner and then promptly subdivided the lot. I know one home has already been approved. And the lot sizes, again, meet the criteria of the 10,000 square feet, but now this is going to change the character of our street because now we're going to have a smaller home, sorry, a smaller lot, but over 4,000-square-foot home on the two parcels. And last Friday, another lot was sold, and it was marketed as going to be split. So, and that's going to be in the middle of our street. So this is changing our whole character and the look and feel of our street, so I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Yvette Royce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I found out a little bit of information from Lisa's presentation that kind of changes a little bit of what I was going to say, but I still have strong feelings that I do want to share. I think I'm on board with most of the people that are here tonight who are expressing their unhappiness with these bulky, large homes that are being erected on small lots and the subdividing of the residential lots. And there are very worthy reasons, I'm sure, to each of us as to why we're unhappy with this new trend. I sent my email in to you folks, so you already got my thoughts. But in the end, no matter how we feel, it's all about the letter of the law. So I look back at 2011, at the changes that were made, and this is where I had some misinformation, which drastically changes what I was thinking. But nonetheless, this whole idea of subdividing and making San Carlos something totally different than what it was is very disturbing. So I think I would like to recommend that we look again at the lot width size for subdividing. I just would like to see less subdividing, if at all possible. I'm not quite sure what Lisa mentioned quite a bit, but as far as the reason for making it easier to subdivide, I basically, you know, I read one article that said, well, this would give us more homes, but I kind of see it as an underlying way for the city to get more property tax. And I hate to think that that is the reason, you know, I'm not saying it is, but I certainly am saying, well, what is? So, and with all of this lot-splitting and altered ratios of house size to lot size, it's becoming pretty obvious that we're compromising the happiness of the San Carlos citizens, which really is the basis for our close-knit community. I mean, that's how San Carlos is regarded by people everywhere. Oh, San Carlos is such a great little city, you know, everybody's involved, people work together, they have a lot of activities that they do on an annual basis where people are involved. And I would hate to see that change, and I feel that if you have a community of people that are not happy, how much are they really going to want to get involved with the city and work together? And, you know, if that starts happening, then San Carlos really will be different.
Next speaker is Kathy Lohan.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to come to support you looking at changing the zoning. We had a house built next door to us a couple of years ago on Howard Avenue.
I remember you.
It was a very small lot, 1,000-square-foot house, replaced with an almover, 3,000-square-foot building. And at the time, what was concerning to us was that when we met with the planning commission, we were told, number one, to talk to our new neighbors to see what we could work out. When everyone knew, the new neighbor was a developer who, in fact, built the house and sold it. So the people we were supposed to negotiate with were not actually going to be the people living there, so that was a little bit disconcerting to us. And then the other issue that was concerning was that the architect on the commission complimented the builder for squeezing so much house on such a small, little piece of land. And as soon as she said that, I thought, well, we're in trouble. So I didn't feel like, as homeowners or as neighbors, our voice was heard at all. And I just feel like I agree with everybody talking about the character of San Carlos, why we all live here, why we come here, and I think you're in danger of really ruining a lot of the character of the town. Thanks.
Next speaker is James Sherba.
I grew up in San Carlos, attended all the local schools, White Oaks, Terreland, and so forth. We were a traditional family, I guess you could say, mother, father, four kids. We lived in a single-story, modest, ranch-style home that proved to be more than adequate for what today would be really an outsized family. Thirty years ago, before my wife and I had a family, we kind of decided we wanted to do the same thing. We bought a modest, single-story, ranch-style home in the White Oaks area. Kids are grown, they're out of the house now, and the house proved to be completely adequate for that-sized family, five of us. The thought of these McMansions going up everywhere, 4,000, 5,000 square feet, and putting maybe a family of four in there, it's not necessary. They can live modestly in San Carlos with housing stock that closely resembles what we traditionally have. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Stewart.
As you said, my name is John Stewart. I'm an architect, so I'm going to probably give you a different point of view. I was on the committee in 2011 that we spent like two or three months going over all of these things, and I just got a notice last week that this was coming up, and I was totally in shock and surprised. I've been here since 1981, and I built a building on Laurel Street in 1987. My son went to Heather Central, Carmont. He now works for me. When I first came here, it was all elderly, mostly, especially White Oaks, was elderly women. The husband had passed away, the kids had moved on, and, you know, we lovelily referred to them as blue hairs. So anyhow, and slowly, over the years, I mean, I've done, I don't know, a couple hundred projects maybe here, and downtown was just, you know, vacant. Most of it was vacant, and there were Goodwill stores and stuff like that. We did the Tivoli Building, and that kind of changed things. And now, I mean, it's a thriving family city. It's a great city to raise kids, and it's just a wonderful place to live, you know, plus that I moved here when I did. What scares me more than the so-called monster houses is what's going on in South Laurel Street where you've got three- and four-story buildings with almost no parking, where they're tearing down the flower shop across the street from my office, and they're going to put two condos and retail, and they're going to have basically two parking places, they're going to use a lift. But if you could imagine pulling out one car to lower another car in the middle of Laurel Street, you know, that corner there of Howard and Laurel, it's a nightmare right now. So that really worries me far more than increasing the sizes of the houses and whatnot. The other thing is that my own personal opinion is to keep it more of a traditional type of design throughout the city. I know other people might take exception with that, but like in Pasadena, they call it bungalow heaven, and to me, that's what San Carlos is about, you know, it's charming, it's, you know, big trees, you know, privacy and that type of thing. Let's see. The process, I mean, it used to be that you could sign up for RDRC and you'd be on the next meeting, you know. Now it takes three months, four months. It costs like, something like $20,000 to prepare all the plans that you need to go there, and I just caught the tail end of the previous RDRC meeting, and, you know, somebody was like, we got to throw all these plans away and start over. I think it might be helpful to start with something much more basic in the way of plans so that the homeowner's not so vested in their design and digging their heels in and trying to get it approved. And, I mean, we've got five new houses right now that we're doing here in San Carlos, so... I could see where you might want to adopt a floor area ratio, because like Lisa put up, there's only, I think, two communities, Redwood City and here, where there is no floor area ratio, and I think that creates a lot of tension and the whole idea of, you know, conforming to the neighborhood. So you start at the edges of a neighborhood with the two-story houses, and eventually they move in. The other thing is, people bought, you know, based on what they could build, and it's really going to affect property values if you downzone everything. But I think they call it the city a good living, and, you know, I believe in that. San Carlos has been a great place to live and work, and I'd like to see it continue that way. Thank you.
Steve Guedesian. Sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
Good evening. Thank you. I had prepared some remarks, but I'm going to wing it a little bit, based on some of the sentiment that I've been hearing in the room and my own personal feelings on this topic. So I was actually before a few of you guys for a design review that I went through for a home on Carmelita not too long ago that is in construction right now. There is a few streets in San Carlos. As we all know, the vast majority of streets in San Carlos are lined with homes that are modestly sized, on modestly sized lots. There's a few rare streets in San Carlos like Carmelita, Knoll, Orange, Elizabeth, a few that have larger lots that can afford and hold homes that are a little bit larger than the norm. And so, you know, when my wife and I were looking for a home, we literally tried bidding on every property we possibly could, couldn't find one, eventually gave up and decided to find the dumpiest house we could possibly find in an attempt that, you know, we have less competition and hopefully build something that looks a little nicer for the neighborhood and do everyone a favor. And that's what we're doing. We're really happy with the experience that we're having thus far. But, you know, I think at the macro, one of the things that I've observed as a buyer and a owner now and living on a street that has some of these larger lots is that there's an intense competition to own right now. Everyone knows that. And I think developers are really taking advantage of that intense drive. They are, on our street, the home that recently, down the street that was sold, was purchased by a developer, these guys are outbidding the neighborhood, people who actually want to own the home and live in the home or modestly update it. And these rare streets like Carmelita and Knoll and Orange, those lots are going to get all split up if the regulations continue to allow for that. And that's, I think that's a shame. There's not a lot of variety in San Carlos, and having a few areas where there is a little bit more consistency would be, or a little diversity would be great. And I think observing the consistent patterns of that neighborhood in particular, I think, is something that's worth preserving, so that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Next speaker is Joyce and Raymond Dimatay.
I had slides. Was it possible to see them on the screen? Yes, I did. My name is Joyce Adimatay, and I did research on zoning rules for San Carlos and five other mid-penninsula cities. These are all the web links. I'm just going to, you know, flip by this a really fast, but these are the web links that I used. I first looked at minimum lot width. As Lisa said earlier, San Carlos has a minimum lot width of 40 feet. And here's a diagram that shows that better. San Mateo, Belmont, and Redwood City have 50 feet, and Menlo Park with 65 feet. You know, I would like to see the minimum lot width increase to at least, you know, 50 feet. And the reason is, that home in the photo at the bottom, it's a pretty big house and it takes up most of the lot, and 40 feet width is just not wide enough for these homes that are either built now or are planned to be built. Then I looked at maximum lot coverage. And San Carlos has a 50% lot coverage, and Redwood City and Menlo Park have 40%. You can see by the diagram on the right, which is San Carlos, there's only five feet on each side, and, you know, most of the width is house, you know, and I would like to see it go back to the way it was 2011 to 40% lot coverage. These are two photos of two homes that were proposed in March of this year, next door to where we live on 206th and White Oak. And the proposal for the two homes was not approved in March. The top drawing is the leftmost home on the right side with our home on the left. As Lisa said earlier, some cities use floor area ratio, which is another alternative to lowering the lot coverage, to use... to lowering the lot coverage, to use far. Then I looked at minimum lot area. San Carlos and San Mateo have a minimum of 5,000 square feet. Redwood City, Belmont, and Palo Alto have 6,000 square feet, and Menlo Park has 7,000 square feet. So that, you know, that's the difference. So I'd like to see the minimum lot coverage go up to at least, you know, 6,000 square feet, and with the two, the photo you saw earlier of two-story homes that are being constructed, and just bigger homes in general, without a larger lot area, will kind of look like this photo of Daly City, which is, you know, all-track homes. Thank you very much.
I live at 26 White Oak Way, and I guess it came personal to me about the subdivision that's brought on by developers, and they seem to be taking advantage of San Carlos and its building codes by multiplying their profits, and while they might be considered property owners, they make their profits and they'll be gone, and they're not concerned about the neighborhood they impact. They impact our schools, our water usage, our sewage buildup, our crowded streets, loss of parking, the loss of wildlife, immature trees. Our building codes seem to encourage these developers to make a profit at the expense of our residents, who lose their view, their privacy, and their sunlight. And as my wife was saying, I'm, you know, for increasing back to what we were, as far as lots, less density and more lot and less house. And if we don't, it will leave us with a crowded and congested city, as I see it, and I think we need a balanced plan of development that protects all the homeowners, and puts a halt to overdevelopment by profiteers. And if you visit my house on 2065 White Oak, you can see the lot next door, they're gonna subdivide it, and they're planning to put two houses there, and you can see how they're gonna darken my walls and my, with their, you know, with their house and my house, and it's a setting which, the natural setting of my house, which, well, I'll lose. They put up story poles direct to show how the scale of the house will be next to mine, and it looks almost over two stories, but they supposedly two stories, and they were told not to put it that large. Already, trees have been damaged, plant life has been removed to make room for these story poles, and the loss of the plant life and the native animals is what my neighbors and I've been trying to avoid, and it's sad, because it was once the garden scene pictured in Sunset Magazine, now to be lost forever. Thank you for your attention.
Mine is very short. My husband wasn't able to be here, and he just wanted to put on record that both of us strongly oppose. I'm sorry? Oh, my name's Patricia O'Connor, and I'm sorry, my husband wasn't able to be here. He just wanted to make sure, to put on record that we're opposed of subdivisions. It's just, when you put too many houses on the street, there's too many cars, there's no parking, you always have to fear around to even drive down one street. So he just wants to make sure to say, "We oppose." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chris Quinn.
I'll be real brief, basically want to echo what she just said. I strongly oppose two lot splitting. I live on Carmelita, and one of the nice things about our street is we have nice wide lots. There's no advantage for our neighbor to start splitting those lots. It's just gonna benefit the developer, and it's just a downward spiral. So I just want to go on record, strongly oppose this.
I live on Carmelita as well, and one of the reasons that there's so many of us here tonight is, I think, one reason would be, there's only 150-foot boundary for notification. So if you live in an area that has larger lots, that doesn't get to too many people. So if all of us who are here tonight knew about what was going on up at the corner before, we would have been here a lot earlier. But now, we're primarily here because of what's happening in the middle of the lot, which, again, a house was sold, and we believe it's a developer, and we believe that he wants to split that lot as well. Over the years, neighbors, I've lived there for 29 years, neighbors have updated their houses, upgraded their houses, and pretty much very respectfully. They didn't pull the houses all the way out to the street, they didn't add thousands of square feet, even though with the lot sizes there, that probably would have been, would have passed through the rules and regulations, but people didn't do that. So now, in the corner, we have a developer comes in, and this is exactly what he's doing. The houses are gonna be right up the street, as much as they can be, he's building some of the largest houses on the block, and the lot size is one-half of all their lot sizes, because he took the big lot and he split it in two. So now, he's got two of the largest houses on the street, and he's got the two smallest lots on the street. So, and I don't understand how that happens. Now, I understand that there's this term called pattern. So if you went down the street and looked at the pattern of our street, same-sized lots, ding ding, all the way down, roughly the same-sized houses, not crammed out to the street, you know, well-done, placement not, you know, nicely placed, and you get to the end, and all of a sudden, now we have these two monster houses on two small lots. So how does that fit the pattern of the community, of our street? I honestly don't know how that happened. But anyway, we're all very opposed to what's going on. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Quinn from Carmelita, and I'm here to, because I'm concerned about the subdividing and the big homes that are being built, I'm a daily dog walker and driver around the community, and lately, I've seen the trend of the land, because it's so valuable being bought by developers and big, building these homes out, overbuilding a lot for monetary benefit. And up for the few years leading up to this, I've been in San Carlos 25 years, and property owners were redoing their houses, respectively and uniquely, for their own ownership, and in relation to the neighborhood. But lately, with the developers coming into town, to profit from San Carlos is concerning, and I'm urging the Planning Commission and possibly the City Council to do their diligence on this matter, adjusting the codes accordingly, so that we maintain our city of good living, and maybe even consider putting a moratorium on what's going on, on the lot splitting, and maybe these developer homes, until you've addressed the item appropriately.
Next speaker is Michelle Quinton. Just by coincidence, right?
Quincet's neighbors and friends. I'm also opposed to lot splitting, and am very concerned, and would like to review, to consider going back to reviewing, so that we go back to the wider width and the higher square footage that used to be in effect before 2011, largely because of the impact on the character of the neighborhood. But it was interesting to me, you mentioned the housing variety was part of the reason for the change, and I feel that's shortsighted. We're not having variety now, we're having many small lots. And personally seeing the impact it has on children in the neighborhood, Carmelita has a horrible traffic problem, and this will only add to that. There'll be more cars parked, more traffic, fewer opportunities for children to play in their front yards, a lot of them won't have backyard space to play in, so to me, that's one of the concerns I have. And I'm also concerned, as mentioned before, about developers making these changes, and we remodeled a home recently, and we tried to do it in accordance to the character of the neighborhood, and respectful to the neighbors, and so I'd like you to consider those rules that were changed, and not allowing these lot splits. Thank you.
Next speaker, Tom Dirdan.
I too, surprise, surprise, live on Carmelita. And I'll spare you regurgitating everything that you've heard so far. I do find it curious that you're so concerned about a garage being the most focal point of a house, that's why you're requiring them to be set back a bit, but yet, you'll probably require a two-car garage on a 40-foot lot. Doesn't, what else is there but garage on a 40-foot lot? First of all. Secondly, nobody likes the rules of the game changed after you entered the game. Most of us here, I'm sure, bought in San Carlos before 2011. 2011, in their infinite wisdom, the city fathers must have gotten together to change the plan to allow 40-foot frontage, which allows subdivisions of this type. Perhaps if the city of good living is being ran by the city fathers with this kind of wisdom, maybe somebody should change the city fathers. We're speaking to a large part of the constituency now, and these ladies and gentlemen are usually the ones that vote. Thirdly, I find it curious that you, that in their wisdom, they said, "We need more urban infield, that's why we're reducing the size of buildable lots," as if you were going to create affordable housing, when the average new construction home in San Carlos would be $3 million. That's affordable housing, if I've ever heard it. Thank you.
Well, I have a lot of very passionate neighbors, because I too live in 1900 block of Carmelita, and my tact can be a little bit different than my neighbor Tom, who's always very emotional about things. I actually wanted to start out by thanking you for being on the Planning Commission, because the brain damage that you go through sometimes is, you wonder why you volunteer for it.
It is great.
Kind of works out to about 10 cents an hour, right?
Less than 10 cents an hour.
Not surprised.
Negative 10 cents.
Yeah. I'm actually a native of California, I've lived my, not a native of California, a native of San Carlos, I lived my entire life here. I grew up in White Oaks. My wife and I bought our first place, was one of the, what I call the brown condos up on Top of Britain. And one of the things we like about San Carlos is it's not all the same. It's not Foster City. It's, you know, you can go down, you can go into White Oaks, and you can have little lots and big lots, you can go around, and, you know, people who have, that can afford different things can live here. When we decided we wanted to buy a home 32 years ago, we bought on Carmelita specifically because all the homes had large lots, and that's hard to get in San Carlos. We didn't want to move someplace else to get a large lot, we wanted to stay in San Carlos. And, you know, everybody's talked about the lot split that was done up the corner. One thing I would ask is that, you know, the 150-foot, you know, notice, like, increase it to 1,000 feet or something, because literally, on our block, when you do 150 feet, two people get noticed, and the rest of us just really didn't understand what was going on. Now that the other, now that the other home was, you know, marketed as a lot split, you know, it's in the middle of the block, it's 100 feet, you know, wide, they're big lots, you know, there's, but they're very, very deep, but, you know, two 50-foot lots just ruins the character of the street, and it's, if that one does it, then the next one, it sells. The people who sold their house, they had one offer, and it was from a developer, because everybody else said, "I know the developer's offering money, and I'm not gonna..." People who wanted to live there didn't make offers, because they knew they couldn't compete. I also think that having one standard for, you know, of lot width for most all of the city is maybe something that should be revisited, because that kind of makes us all like one neighborhood, instead of, you know, having the diversity of character of different neighborhoods. I actually think, going back to the standard, if you're gonna do a lot split, having a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot is probably a good idea. There aren't that many, if you, you said the numbers about how many lot splits there could be, I bet if you drilled down all the criteria, it's a lot less than that, and, you know, we don't have that many neighborhoods with big lots, so let's give people who want a big lot the opportunity to stay in San Carlos. On home size, I just had a couple of things, a lot of them have been said, but there's two things that I think one or two speakers mentioned. On home size, particularly where one-story homes go into a two-story home, really looking at the shading impact of the neighbor and the sightline privacy. We have two-story and one-story houses on our, you know, on our block, but the way the two-story ones are situated in the lot, they're not, they're kind of in the center, a lot of mature trees, people still get their privacy. My neighbor has a nice sunny backyard with a swimming pool, if I put a second story in my house, he wouldn't have a sunny backyard anymore, and he wouldn't have a swimming pool, I'm sorry, he'd still have a swimming pool, but he wouldn't have any privacy. You know, if you put us, if you split the lot next to mine, and you put two two-story houses, I'm gonna lose all my privacy. And then, one final point, when you, we had a nice meeting with Lisa last week, she was very informative, and we really appreciated it. One of the things that we asked about was heritage trees, and like, if I understand correctly, well, if you have a heritage tree, but you can't enjoy your lot, because, you know, the heritage tree's in the wrong place, then you can take it out. Well, if you look at one of the lot splits that's likely gonna be up before you, there's this huge, beautiful, couple-hundred-year-old oak tree, and on one lot, you can build all around it, it works fine. If you divide the lot, it's gonna be right in the center of the second lot, you're not gonna be able to build anything unless you want a 1,000-square-foot home. So you divide the lot, and then you come back and you take the tree out, so you can enjoy it. You know, I think that'd be a very unintended consequence. So again, thank you for listening to us all tonight, and hope you change the ordinance.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Haynes Perry.
Hi. My printer went ape, and I couldn't bring as many copies for people as I hoped to. September 15th, a local developer made a blog post about their delight in getting a new property. They said, "Revella Construction recently acquired a great piece of property, 116 Wilshire Court in San Carlos. It was a two-bedroom house, straight-up '70s, and pretty disgusting. Obviously, we're in this to make money, not to make it our home, so this market isn't in our favor. Our angle was to offer all cash and way over-the-list price in hopes that we could, in fact, divide the property." They did divide, they did win the property, and they did divide it. And that's the point. It is nice to have ordinances that say you should go talk to your neighbors, or that you should consider the impact on your neighborhood, but many of the people making choices about what to build don't live here, don't live with the impacts, don't have to think about what the neighborhood looks like. It's completely valid for developers to try to maximize their profits, that's what they're in business to do. But that's why we have a planning committee, and that's why we have zoning, is to balance the long-term needs of the city against the short-term needs of people who own a particular property. Anytime somebody remodels or truthfully tears down, the zoning board should be considering the impact on the neighbor's privacy. They should be thinking about whether the new building will make it impossible for neighbors to go solar. They should be thinking about the impact on the sewer system. If you cover most of the lot, nothing is flowing down into the ground, everything is flowing off into the sewer system. And finally, they need to be thinking about the impact on the visual quality of the neighborhood. I live up on Rogers Avenue, right where Britton intersects Alameda. When I drive up Britton, there are a couple of really beautifully developed new homes, one with a rock face, and another I can't adequately describe, but they're in harmony with the neighborhood. I would like to ask the zoning committee, and the planning committee and the zoning board formally consider the long-term consequences for the town whenever they make a decision. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Jacobs.
Good evening. Chris Jacobs, I've lived in San Carlos now for 28 years. And surprise, surprise, I too oppose lot splits. But in a little different way, because I do think, after we had a meeting with Lisa, which again, I really appreciate, I, I was not aware of the 2011 changes in, in the codes and the subdivisions. And I would urge the planning commission and ultimately the city council to reconsider that. She mentioned a couple of times regarding simplifying the codes. I think the real word is densifying the codes. And that densification is the reason everybody's here tonight. And I can tell you that there are many more citizens out in San Carlos that are concerned about the densification in San Carlos. So appreciate it and would like you to reconsider the current ordinances to retroactively look at the 2011 codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vicky Sworensen.
By now, a lot of people have said the things that I was going to talk about, but the sewage was a question I had, is my sewage backs up all the time. We've had problems down our street. I too also did a remodel in 2000 and did it to character of the street and not overboard. I'm just wondering, how does our sewage sewer systems handling all these double houses? If we're going to have, I'm sorry, I'm all in Carmelita as well. Two houses coming in in one lot, two houses to be in the next lot. How, how does a sewer system hold up? And also, my bill, sewage bill, has gone up. Am I paying for all these new people to be putting these new things in and connecting to it? The other thing is the lot coverage, 50% of lot coverage, but yet these houses look like they're taking way more than 50%. Has anybody talked about variances? Are these people getting variances? We have, we're on a creek side and I know there's a setback from the creek. Are they just buying out, buying their way out of a variance to get a bigger house? So I just wondered why no one's talked about that, if that's not in the presentation. Is there a variance that they can get and pay for it? Let's see, I had something else. The 100-foot, yeah, the 100 feet, property owner notification, it would be helpful if it was larger because you get more input. It's, it just seems like it would be a natural thing. Also, okay, I find it concerning that one builder who bought on our block to renovate and, and build two big houses can also have several projects going on in the city of San Carlos. He also has another lot split. And I think that's concerning right now. I mean, that should raise some plagues for the planning commission at least, if this guy's buying up all of San Carlos to do this. Let's see. And in 2011, I read that when you guys made all these changes to the ordinances, if that's the right term, that they had, they talked to architects and they talked to builders and they talked to the public. Well, I was here in 2011 and I didn't know anything about these changes too. I was wondering, who, who got notice of that? Let's see, do I have something else? Okay. And also, you talk about harmonious transition between design and neighboring, neighboring houses. But I'm just wondering, who's looking at that? Because it does not look harmonious to me when I see a small rancher with a giant two-story next to it. It doesn't look harmonious. And I think one of the last things is, maybe you guys could get a system down for when we email in, for maybe a set, like the subdivision, lot split meeting. And then when I attended it, they said, "Oh, I didn't get any, we didn't have any emails from you. We don't have anything against this project." When, it's like, wait a minute, several of our neighbors emailed in and, and then, I think that a better tracking of people's comments could be, could be served. And then also, asking us to talk to the contractor seems ridiculous. That they were going to, you know, change their design because one neighbor is, or several neighbors are, are opposed to what they're doing or have concerns. That's ridiculous. Let's see. Also, can you ask, can you ask the people when they submit their plans? I know you must look on Google for the neighborhood, but it'd be nice in a drawing to show the sunny, you know, what sun is going to be taken away from the house next door. So maybe the design needs to be from the sidewalk across the street and see how it's going to be impacting the neighborhood rather than just seeing the plan just with the building in front of you. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. So Christian, I have you next. Did you want to start the presentation?
Sure, I could go. I could go.
And you have a Sarah in here, but I've got multiple Sarahs as speakers. What's the, who's, what's Sarah's last name?
Oh, well, if we're going to run through, because there are a number of us who kind of got together and said, "Let's try and not say the same thing 10 times. Let's divide and conquer on the issue." So actually, I think, I still think that it would be a better bookend or, you know, end to, to the series than a beginning. So if Sarah's right here and she's ready to go, if, if that would be all right.
Absolutely. And just for, I just, just for the record, because you, on your speaker form, you had eight people. Is this the Sarah that you're referring to? Because I have two Sarah speaker cards and I just don't know, they didn't put her last name on it, so.
Oh, mine has Tim B., T-I-M-B-Y.
And you're part of the, of?
Yes.
Okay. So then, before I do that then, why don't I ask the other Sarah to come up? Because that's what I was trying to clarify. Sarah Slane. Sorry about that.
So, I do not live on Carmelita. I live on Greenwood.
I think we've met everybody on Carmelita today.
But lovely to meet all of you.
There's two houses that are going to be coming in for sale on Carmelita. Bad joke, bad joke, bad news, sorry.
No, I'm really quite happy where I am, thank you.
Two, two, sorry.
Actually, just moved this year up from St. Francis. So we, my husband and I have been in San Carlos for about 12, 13 years now. Love the area. I do share some of the concerns that have been voiced about the lot splits, primarily because I think, contrary to some who feel, and I understand the nexus of this feeling, that, that a small bungalow should be sufficient for all families. The demographics of our families have changed. There are a lot of families moving into the neighborhood where, because of the financial realities of living in the Bay Area, both parents work, sometimes they have to work from home. Many people, such as myself, have family from out of state, elderly parents who like to come visit. We like to have a place better than the couch to house them. And, and that leads a lot of us to look for larger homes than the typical 1300 to 1500 square-foot bungalow. And I think that the larger lots do accommodate those rather nicely. One concern that I wanted to address with the group, and I saw this, I haven't heard it as much at the meeting, but I did see this in a lot of the survey comments, was what I perceived to be a notion that the second you start to talk about putting a second story on a house, you've created a McMansion and it's out of scale for the neighborhood and it's abomination that should be somehow prohibited. And I think that that's, at least where I grew up, two-story houses are a very common and predictable and expected thing. I, I understand that the majority of houses in San Carlos historically were single-story bungalows, but I don't think it's unreasonable for a neighbor to move into a house and expect that they would be able to put a second story on, provided that you keep with certain setback limitations and things like that. One of the concerns I hear about second stories that keeps getting repeated is this notion of, of privacy and shade of your neighbors. And certainly, that's something that people should endeavor to take into consideration. By the same token, I think if you're in a 5,000-square-foot lot, to expect that you're going to have complete privacy from your neighbors and that you're never going to see their structures or have to hear their children or anything like that is, is frankly a little bit unrealistic. And that was largely why I came, was to make sure that there is a voice for people who feel like there, there needs to be some reasonable allowances for development. I think this is the type of topic that tends to generate a lot of passion on one side of the issue. And I know the only reason that I knew about this meeting was because of a very vocal next-door thread that I thanked someone like two months ago on. And now I get four or five emails a day with updates. And I, I suspect that there are a lot of people in San Carlos, certainly a lot of people that I know, who think that the current regulations, while maybe they could be tweaked here and there, are generally consistent with what we should be doing to encourage development in the community. And I frankly suspect that most of them have no idea that this meeting is taking place or, you know, if, if they're not in the process of building, frankly, just didn't feel like they had time or that it was a high enough priority for them to come and speak on that. One other thing that I just wanted to point out anecdotally, I know people complain a lot about developers. I understand that frustration. I will say, I know a lot of San Carlos families that when they've been looking to move into a larger house, have bought developer-spec homes. So it's not just people coming from outside the area who are buying those homes. And then I, I do have to laugh when I hear people talk about parking issues, coming from Minnesota where people actually park in their garage because it's cold as heck half the year. I, I was amazed when I came to California and learned that most people have turned their garages into rec rooms and nobody actually parks in them. And I feel like if we could just get people to put at least one car in the garage, it would dramatically help our parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
So the other Sarah then.
I'm moving on from the lot-splitting issue, although it's, it's relevant, but to just large houses on small lots. And there's several things, we, we do have a group of people talking on several issues. The two I wanted to, to mention in particular because they're near my house. I live on Knoll Drive, a large lot, and many of the lots are large there. There was a house that was demolished at 731 Knoll Drive and this pertains to the large heritage oak tree that was on that property. That's one of my two issues. The, the oak tree had to be removed because it didn't, maybe I should read this because if I have time, it's, it was, the heritage oak had to be taken out because the house was really too big. And I think, I would like to see that changed for the future and, and the condition of what heritage trees mean. He, he, I, I'll read this. "I would like the, the code revision for the heritage trees to read such that the construction for the new home or the addition not encroach into the drip line of these trees. This should include no slope cutting or trenching," which was the case in this, in this particular case. Trenching for utilities and so on can, can ruin a tree like that. And then the other issue with heritage trees is that the arborists for the city are, are constrained. I noticed that both arborist reports for that particular tree didn't have a caveat saying that they were not responsible if the tree failed. I think this is very important, that your arborists do have that so they don't feel that they're in, in danger of being sued later. In other words, if, if the builder hurts the tree, then it comes back to the arborist maybe having made a bad report. I'm going to give you my letter, my letter that I wrote about this so that you, maybe it'll show up better in, in the minutes. So that liability issue, I think, is a major one that has to be addressed in the, in the approval of, of keeping heritage trees. The other issue is parking. New homes, these big new homes on small lots don't have enough room for parking. They're, they're only obligated to have two spots on, on the site. And I think that's a major problem, especially in small, in, in small streets that don't have sidewalks where people are parking into the street, they aren't off the street. People weave down Elizabeth and around Knoll Drive or can't get through. I've had to back up, go around, things like that. Two spots for big houses is not sufficient, two onsite spots are not sufficient for a big house. Those all pertain to too, too big of a house on a small lot.
Thank you, Sarah.
So I have the order, Alstair Adams.
Red eye tonight, so he was hoping he'd get on early.
Well, you changed that order on me, Christian, so don't blame that on me, all right? James.
Hoffacker.
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you for having me. My name's James Hoffacker. I'm resident 12 years. So I wanted to just sort of briefly touch on what someone said where they think a lot of people agree with this. Maybe we tweak the building code, but it's basically what we should have right now. It's about what a lot of people think. It's okay. And out of 5,000-square-foot lot, a 4,500-square-foot home, I don't think most people would agree that's a, you know, a good use of a small lot. And it infringes on your neighbor's privacy. Into the, pre-2011, you could have built a 3,500-square-foot house in a 5,000-square-foot lot. And I think I want to make the point that, just going back and repealing 2011's law, I don't think that's enough. I think we really need to think about where we want to see San Carlos go in the future. If you look at Menlo Park where I used to live, they've dealt with this for decades. People have been coming in and trying, developers have been doing this. And they've, palowed the same thing. They've adopted these floor-area ratios to deal with this. They, that essentially forces people to not build their second story 15 feet from the back, which, you know, privacy, sunlight. You know, they, they put that in there also because it has teeth. If you don't have, I was really surprised when we came in and met with Lisa and the, and the planning commission. One house that went in our neighborhood was three X the density of all the other houses in the neighborhood. And we thought, okay, clearly in the law says the house must fit in with the neighborhood. It's, it says must, not should. And we were told that that's sort of an interpretation and as long as it's not, you know, within the letter of the law, it fits in with the neighborhood. So this idea that like, you know, these, this verbiage that says, "Hey, your house should fit in with the neighborhood," it doesn't have any teeth. We need to put in real, you know, practical rules. I'm okay with big houses. If you're on a 7,000-square-foot lot and you want to put a 3,500-square-foot house in, go for it. I mean, you know, you should have rules and setbacks. You shouldn't be able to put your second story right up, you know, 15 feet from the lot. You shouldn't be able to block all your neighbor's sun. You know, generally that's taken care of by limiting the amount of space. But I, I think we just need to think about like where the city wants to go and really think about putting some real teeth behind the rules so that developers know, citizens know, we don't have to sit here and sort of argue and, you know, review committees and things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Harkola.
Hi. I'm a property owner and I live on Baytree Road. And I'm here to highlight one of the consequences of the current San Carlos residential development standards that I feel due to the lot coverage standard incentivizes large massing of houses, especially second floors. Five years ago, I remodeled my house and among other design considerations, I reconfigured a floor plan to move my kitchen and dining room into the area of the house where I could take advantage of the winter sun, adding window wall and that kind of thing. You know, and it's really nice, the value of the sun in the winter. I mean, just go in your car at a cold day and feel how nice it is when you get in it, when it's warm. Well, that's the same effect that I get in my house. And it's actually reduced my heating bill. Recently, I was notified by my neighbor who wanted to completely rebuild their 1,700 square-foot house to create a 3,312-square-foot house with a 1,321-square-foot second story. All right, you know, so they had to go through the process because it's over 50%, right, to do the RDRC. And I was notified. You know, planning was great, worked with them, expressed my concerns, and the planner actually came to my house. I mean, impressive. And they actually asked the architect to create a solar study to talk about the effect or the potential effect of what this shading may do to me. The solar study in no way demonstrated the effect of shading on my property. And it was more of a courtesy than anything else. And when I went to the RDRC review meeting, I did get some empathy. But the bottom line is, there is no standard to address this issue. But the bottom line is, there is no standard to address this issue. The project was approved. The bottom line is, I will no longer have any sunlight in my kitchen or dining room from October to March. None. No winter sun. It's gone. You know? And what is the value of sun, natural sunlight? You know, to me, it's priceless. So the bottom line that I see in regards to San Carlos development standards, they don't protect the residents' right to light. Palo Alto has a daylight standard plane that addresses this issue. The city of Berkeley can require a shading study offering complete standards for how to prepare this that graphically demonstrate the effect of shading on an adjacent property. This is a graphic tool. You know, this is the kind of thing that the powers that be can be truly informed about the impact. So, you know, I just want to wrap this up and say, you know, let my voice not be heard just for me and my family, but for all the residents of the city of San Carlos who value the sun and their right to it. Thank you.
I'm actually reading an email or a letter from a lady named G D Baker who couldn't be here tonight. And she says, "I'm back from house hunting in the wine country, but I still don't think I'll be able to attend this meeting tonight. I've attached pictures of before and after of my view." Do you have those? No. "I attended three meetings with the city to plead my case, and they just didn't give a darn. They already had made their decision in favor of the developer. They told me I had no individual rights. Now I have a 4,000 square foot house where my view used to be, but they let the developer do whatever he wanted as long as he was within the setbacks. The developer made promises that he never kept. Instead, there has been damage to my property. Things have been broken, not to mention cigarette butts in my yard and not being able to get out of my driveway half the time. I was told that I could not prove it was them that caused the damage. I've lived in San Carlos for almost 40 years and in this house for 35 years. I knew someday that I would move, but I did not expect it to be this soon. The value of my home has gone down. My home is my retirement. I don't even want to go out into my backyard anymore because of my lack of privacy, and all I look at is this monstrous house. From my living room, I see no view, just a roof. As much as I would like to attend the meeting and help in whatever way possible, it's just too upsetting. I live with this every day, and I try not to be upset about how things have changed. The best decision is for me to move out of San Carlos." I've lived in San Carlos myself for, I guess, 30 years. I've been in Belmont since '59. And I am surrounded... I live on Charlton Street, and I have a split level house. It's one level with a second level for the two bedrooms. It was, I guess, remodeled in, I don't know, I think it was in the '50s. It was built in the '40s. And surrounding me on both sides and behind me are single level houses. And on one side, it's a rental, and on the other side, it's empty because the lady who lives there is very old and is now living in the San Carlos Elms and is just waiting to pass away. And her children, as soon as it's sold, as soon as she passes away, will sell her house, and I'm sure it will be torn down. And another very large house, I'm sure two stories, will be built on that property. And then I will be having the same problem that everyone else is talking about, where the house will be looking into my backyard, and I'll have no privacy and no sun as well. And I am wondering, then, what I'm going to have to do. Will I have to leave the home I've now been in for 20 years and have to move so that I can enjoy sunlight also? I'm retired now. My house is paid off. I'm trying to live the dream, but with my property taxes as high as they are going up every year and living on a fixed income because I was forced to retire a few years early, I don't know if I'll be able to stay in San Carlos, which I dearly love. And as I walk around San Carlos, walking my dog every day, first walking up Chesum and talking to my friends that walk their dogs, all I hear about is complaints about how they have these same issues about people building big houses next to them and so forth and so on. And I wrote an email, I think, to you guys and said that, you know, back, I don't know, about 10 years ago, I wanted to just build a little carport in front of my single car garage that's not big enough to drive my car into. That's why I don't park in my garage. And I just wanted to put a little carport over there so that my paint didn't continue to degrade on my car. And I got turned down because I was overdeveloped for my lot. My house is 2,300 square feet, and I have a decent sized lot. And I couldn't build a carport because I was overdeveloped because I had a deck in the backyard. And now I hear you can build 4,700 square feet on a 5,000 foot lot. And I said in my email, "When did that change?" Well, now I know. It changed in 2011. I lived here in 2011. I didn't know about anything going on about changing it. So for one thing, I know now that we have better communication with the city because we have the shape thing and stuff which, you know, people can find out about if they really pay attention. But I think the communication, you know, is much better now. But I just think a lot of people still don't have a clue what's going on. So I don't know how we fix that, but I know I'm way over my time. But, okay, that's enough for me. Bye.
Brent Callen, 16-year resident of San Carlos. Live over on Cedar Street. And so I'd echo, I'm going to echo probably several comments that have already been made here, so I'll try to be succinct. First of all, thank you for taking this on in terms of asking for both of the study sessions and for the planning department for bringing this forward. I understand for a lot of people here, imagine what it would be like to serve on this commission and have to sit here, month after month and meeting after meeting, listening to this. So the reason I'm here, I was here at the March meeting, is a few months ago on Cedar Street, we were presented with a developer who purchased a property across the street from where I live, who's looking to do some redevelopment. And initially, the initial letter that we received and in the meeting, the idea of redevelopment that the developer was looking to get us excited about was to put two-story homes by splitting a lot and potentially putting it into a flag lot configuration. And I think he did get us excited about it, but probably not in the way that he initially anticipated. And so I realized that that plan has not been put forth. That was, to use his words in the meeting that we initially had, "to give us an idea of what the code would allow," to paraphrase what was said at that meeting. So I don't blame developers for what they've been doing here in San Carlos. I mean, developers who are in the business to make a profit, that's obviously what they're focused on. As somebody said earlier, there's a main difference between a developer and a homeowner, though. Somebody who's going to live next to you for the next 10 or 20 years, ideally who is going to look to negotiate a compromise and get along together, right? Versus somebody who just has to appease us, get it through the planning commission and departments, and move on with their life and the next project. One other comment that's made, there's been a lot of focus on 2011 and the before and after effects, which I think is a bit of a misnomer as well, or perhaps a straw man in the sense of, you know, we didn't see a lot of lot splits before 2011. We talked about the reason that is. But we didn't necessarily see a lot of what people termed overdevelopment. I mean, 10, 15 years ago, there weren't a lot of people in here raising those same issues. And so I think, you know, as somebody said, going back and just looking at rolling back the standards is not necessarily the solution everyone's looking for. I think there's always unintended consequences. If you look at the home values and what's happened in terms of the last five years, going up 50% plus, the difference, you know, building costs, I don't think have increased at that same rate. I think it's got to be the underlying land value that's increased more. And I think there are unintended consequences of that. So in closing, because I know I'm over time and I want to stick to at least some sort of a commitment here, there's also then been comments about the 2030 plan and future development and where that's supposed to be coming from. And I just want to get this on the record because my, at least the way I'm reading the San Carlos general plan, it says, "Residential growth, the majority of new housing in San Carlos is expected on infill parcels near downtown, along the El Camino Real Corridor and along Old County Road between Holly and Terminal Avenue and East San Carlos Avenue. These units will mostly be multiple-family residences, such as apartments, townhouses, and condominiums. New single-family residents will likely occur on vacant parcels and as rebuilt or remodeled homes in existing single-family neighborhoods." There's nothing in there about lot splitting. There's nothing in there about the, you know, some of the issues I think we now see being raised, which is, once again, you know, I think unintended consequences. And so I applaud you for taking this forward to the city council. I thank everybody for their work, and I appreciate you addressing some of the points that are brought out in terms of the differences between us and surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Betsy Perry?
That was me. I've already...
Okay.
Sorry.
Erin Frost? I believe she, Christian.
All right. Thank you, Isara. All right. Well, I also would like to thank the commission for bringing this up. It's really encouraging to me that there is a public discourse around this. I think the time is now, so I'm glad to see this much care and attention being accorded to the issue by the community. So my name is Christian Vesha. I live in San Carlos with my two teenage daughters and my wife up on Cedar Street. We've been here for 14 years. We remodeled in 2009, went from 1,400 to about 1,770 square feet. We have a very comfortable home. I'm here, like a lot of people, because I've got a story, so I'd like to tell you my story. And so this is the house that went up the street from us. The one on the left is like a 1930s or 40s house that was previously there, granted small. And the one on the right is the one that's been put in place now. And it's a pretty good example of the houses that people have been talking about that are essentially built to the limit of the property line in every direction. It's 28 feet tall. It's built to five feet on the sides with the property line and 15 feet in the back. Overall, it's 3,400 square feet as a house, and it fits in with, frankly, none of the houses on the street. Understanding and having given the code a really close read and coming across the design factors, I had some hope at this point that, well, maybe we actually have basis for bringing our concerns to the city. There is something in there that says, "To be approved, a structure must meet the following criteria," one of which is not introduce a large difference in mass and style to the neighborhood. So I dutifully went about the job of collecting data on 10 homes in the neighborhood, and this is just half of that. It's the six houses on the same side of the street, and you can see in the upper right-hand corner, the little house that's been replaced by the very large one.
Christian, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Do your numbers include the garages? Because 807, just looking in the small one that was torn down, my thinking is it couldn't possibly include the garage size?
I believe these numbers include the garage in all cases.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So summary of the data essentially was that in our neighborhood, it's kind of a neighborhood of relatively small houses on medium-sized lots. Average home size for 10 homes was a little over 1,400 square feet. The lot size was 6,700. And if you calculate at a floor ratio of the house size to the lot size, you get 22%. So the new home that's going in, or has gone in, is nearly 3,400 square feet on a smaller-than-average lot, and the house-to-lot ratio is 62%. So I said, great, you know, we've got a case to make here. We went into the design review committee meeting saying, "This house is nearly two-and-a-half times as big as the other homes in the neighborhood. It's on a 20% smaller lot, so you can basically see that the density is almost three times homes in the neighborhood." So I want to kind of walk you through. So we expressed our concerns and shared some data at the RDRC. There were 10 residents at the meeting and three additional who wrote in with their concerns. We were essentially told that the house applies with all applicable rules and standards that it needs to be approved. What we got out of it was one to four 15-gallon shrubs and a request or a requirement that the developer protect two existing trees onsite. We then had a follow-up meeting with city staff where we brought more detailed data. And I sat down, I said, "Well, don't you think 2.3 times as large and nearly three times as dense presents a significant or a large difference of mass, size, and scale to the neighborhood?" And again, what I was told was, "Well, big is a matter of opinion. There is not a numeric standard there that we can use to judge." And then I thought, okay, well, maybe there's a reasonable way to appeal this and work this up the chain. And I discovered that if you want to appeal in San Carlos, it costs you basically two grand to do that at the level of the planning commission. At the city council, if you want to do an appeal, it's another two grand, and only then can you take it to kind of a civil court. So part of my comparison of zoning ordinances across six cities on the peninsula, I looked at the costs of appeal. And San Carlos, as it is in many other areas, is really out of line. Most cities, it's more like $200 to do an appeal. So this, to me, is just an economic barrier to protection of rights. So my bottom line here is this notion of design factors has no teeth, as Jamie said, and that without reasonable numeric guidelines around the zoning ordinance, whether it's lot area coverage or far, are the only thing that really matters currently. So what made this possible? I think we've already talked about the changes in the zoning ordinance. This is a summary of those and the fact that at the same time, we've got this perfect storm of land values have gone up. And I'm really impressed at how many people here brought their stories included developers.
Who prefers me on that? What hasn't been discussed as part of the 2011...
We don't have time, thank you. That's my wife. I can say that. I know the feeling. So actually, most of the husbands in the room would probably disagree with that, but...
It's okay, you...
So with that, Christian, you've got two more minutes, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. So with a lot of work and help from half a dozen residents that did fact checking, we laboriously put together, you know, I went to every single zoning ordinance in six cities, collected all the data that has an impact on the size of house, and calculated house size. Now, the numbers may not be perfect, but I will say that I got an architect to do design drawings for me for San Carlos on the 5,000 square foot lot. And what you can see there is you can build in excess of a 4,500 square foot lot on that house. So I'm not opposed to large houses. It's large houses on small lots. Another thing that the graphics show you is just how out of line San Carlos is with every other community on the peninsula. The smallest house, I mean, the largest house on a small lot in San Carlos is bigger than the largest house on lots up to 10,000 feet in many neighboring communities. I also analyzed some of the data in the Shape San Carlos survey. I want to thank you for putting that out there. And I just kind of said at a high level, what are the themes? Because this, to me, is the story of the impact of large houses on community. And it's what people are concerned about. And we see everything from just loss of city charm, cohesion and character, privacy, shading, lights, views, and so forth. And I'm sure you can all read those. My conclusion, I think our zoning ordinance is seriously out of line with other communities and doesn't fit in with our notion of the city being the city of good living. I don't feel like there is a balance between protections of all residents' rights. There's not a good balance between new residents and old residents, between well-to-do residents and less-well-to-do residents, and residents and those people who are not residents, which are the developers. And so I think there's a real risk that San Carlos is going to lose its character and charm over the years. And I've talked to more than one person who said, "Depending on how this goes, I'll make my decision about whether I decide to remain in this town." And frankly, I agree with that. So in terms of recommendations, this is probably one of my most important slides that I think... I think it's way, way oversimplistic to think that, you know, oh, the easy solution would be, let's roll it back to 2011. If you compare what 40% lot coverage looks like, it's really only, it's still a problem. And so I think 30% is probably more in line with what might make sense. Summary, you know, great, it sounds like we're going to look at this. I think we ought to consider many of the issues that people have identified. I think our process needs to be both balanced and accessible to all residents. And kind of as a tagline, this is not anti-growth. I'm, you know, you want a big house, great. Find a reasonably sized lot. It's about proportion. So this is about smart growth that allows growth but still protects the rights of all residents in the city. So thank you for your time. (applause)
You had mentioned the fees for appeal, which admittedly, during my first opportunity seeing appeal, I was actually very surprised by the fees as well. Can you cite numbers specifically as to what other communities are, are charging for appeal?
You know, I didn't bring the table that I put together, but I do have the data. It's one of the rows in the table I produced, and that's an online document that I stuck up on a, on a Google Drive. So, there is data for other cities regarding what it costs to. In some cases, it might be a link to a schedule of fees, but...
About $1,000.
About minus $1,000.
Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that, that's decided by man-hours and the City Council? I think they update that annually, right?
There's, yeah, there's a fee study that the council considers every year, and the appeal fee takes into account generally staff time and, and costs.
Thank you, Christian. That was my question.
Any other que, any other comments?
I have a few.
I'm sure you do.
And...
Don't make me levy...
No. I am only on the commission for another month.
Uh-oh.
And so, I will not have an opportunity to, to vote on this or have much of a say in it. That being said, I do have a few things that I would, I would like to say right now. Some in favor, some against. The, the, the first is, I think you made a lot of extremely excellent comments, but there is another side here, and one of which is that our city is undergoing tremendous growth, and we're looking at a, a building coming up very shortly that's already been, that we've already seen once, that would put another 2,000 to 3,000 jobs in our city. Where will these people go? Where will they live? If we're adding 10 new single-family homes a year, I, I don't know what the solution is, and I'm not pretending to say that the solution is to make bigger houses. It's just something that we need to consider when we're dealing with all of this. I, I don't know what the solution is, but that needs to be a piece of it. One of the other things to consider in all of this is, if you have a 10,000-foot, 10,000 square-foot lot, those are perfect lots for small lot, single-unit developments, bungalows, townhouse developments. If you want to change these guidelines, those are something you have to think about, because if you change it and don't allow lot splits, but still allow something that allows somebody to come in and put four little townhomes on that 10,000-square-foot lot, you've just made it actually worse than having two single-family homes there. So, you need to think about all the consequences, and you really need to look and understand the zoning ordinance that the city has, so that when you make changes and the city makes changes, we're actually not making it worse. I have a couple of comments for, for staff here. And, and these are not questions that I expect to answer tonight, but I think that they're questions that may be good to have answers for when this goes to the City Council. What are the negatives of rolling back the 2011, pre, rolling back the development standards to pre-2011? I know there's a lot of positives, but what are the negatives? I think that's something that we ought to look at. And then also a question for the Mr. Rubens down there. Legally, can we change it back, or is this considered a taking by the city? For all those individuals that purchased their property between 2011 and 2016, we're now actually taking back their right to build these larger homes. And so, that's a question I don't expect to answer tonight, but I think it's something that needs to be discussed and understood. And I agree with you, as an audience, the design review doesn't really reflect what the, the guidelines say. It's, it's really hard to do anything more than, say, modify landscaping as was presented. I think when I was on the RDRC, the only thing we ever did was actually add a few trees here and there to block lines of sight. So, I perfectly understand what you're saying, and maybe there should be some better direction given to the Chair of the RDRC, who actually happens to be one of the Planning Commissioners. It rotates through the individuals on the Planning Commissioners. And then, the last thing that I want to say here is, you know, San Carlos has changed in the last 10 years. It's not the way it was 10 years ago, and it will be very different 10 years from now. I understand that we can slow that growth a little bit, but the whole Bay Area is booming, and the growth is going to occur somewhere, and we can try and stop it from occurring in San Carlos. But, if you look at our downtown, if you look at what's happening on the east side, it's, this growth is everywhere in this city, and trying to slow down the, the houses is, is an admirable idea, but you're going to have to look at more than that, because there will continually be pressure on those houses if we continue to grow the way we're growing.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else, David?
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I'm glad that we had this. I was supportive of it. I think in some ways what we have to say is, is less significant than what the City Council has to say, because anything we want to do would have to be approved by the City Council. The City Council is also an elected body, and we're an appointed body. You know, my view of, of the responsibility of the Council is, is twofold. I mean, one is, it needs to be responsible to its constituents and think about what they want. It also needs to, you know, do what it, it thinks is right, which sometimes means looking to a great, a greater good. Lot splits, I, I still don't understand how lot splits benefit anything. You know, I recognize the need for, for new development. I do. But we're talking about potentially building maybe 100 houses. I don't know anyone who is in favor of lot splitting, and so, you know, I'd be very interested to, to hear what folks have to say that's positive about it, but if I don't, you know, hear anything that's positive about it, I don't, I don't see why we would have it. The big houses issue is more complicated, because, I mean, especially when you talk about lot coverage, if we, if we reduce the amount of lot coverage, then we're going to encourage more two-story homes. I mean, it's just, that's the, that's the natural consequence. If you have less land that you can build on, you're going to build up. And so, you know, I, I am, I am concerned about reducing the lot coverage, and I, I am interested in, in hearing about proposals with respect to FAR. I think that there might be some room for that. But, but again, I mean, I, I think what the City Council has to say about the subject is going to be more important than what we have to say about it.
Agreed. Shannon, anything?
I, I agree with the, the comment about the FAR and considerations that I think that the City Council needs to, to look at. One of the things that we've actually talked about on the commission here is the notification. That seems like an easy fix, and I think regardless of whatever happens, we should just make that a formal recommendation for the City Council to, to, to consider the notifications. It seems like an easy one to address. We've brought this up several times on this, on this, on this commission to do that. I know Commissioner Harper-Pederson has brought it up, and I, I think we should just make the recommendation to extend that. But it is for the, for, we're not actually making recommendations on the zoning for, for the housing at this point. It's just a study session, so...
Well, I wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work. I know there's a lot of citizens that put a lot of work into trying to present the message. I think, I think we've heard this loud and clear. I try to allow as much time as possible for public comment. Obviously, this is step one of many steps. Step two would be the presentation in front of the City Council, which I think was July 11th. So, from now until then, I'm sure they'll summarize some of our comments, as well as some of your comments, as well as provide some of the documentation that the residents have provided, and hopefully have a little more detailed report for the, the council.
I do think the council might benefit from having a sense, at least on the lot split issue, without, you know, causing staff too much undue hardship, is that how many lots actually could be split? And frankly, also, how many lots could be split if we went back to requiring them to be 20,000 square feet? You know, what's interest, was interesting to me with part of the presentation was, when you look at Carmelita, if you were to actually pattern our ordinance with some of the other ordinances, it wouldn't prevent the lot splits in Carmelita. The how, the lots in Carmelita are close to 20,000 square feet. So, if you went to a requirement of 6,000 or 7,000 square feet, the lots that could be split now are still going to get split. If you do go to 20,000, then I suppose probably very few, if any, lots are going to be split. I also think there might be some value, again, to the extent it's not an undue burden, to get a sense of the number of one-story houses versus two-story houses that are being built, because I think it'll be a, a reflection on the impact on the change in the coverage. But, again, I, you know, if the City Council isn't interested in those subjects, I mean, they, it's really for them.
So, Jesse, one more thing about the lot split since David brought it up.
I don't think I was the first person to bring it up tonight.
I know. One of, one, one, another idea along that line is to have, right now, our hands are tied as a Planning Commission about lot splits. I mean, it's either allowed or it's not allowed. One idea might be to allow the Planning Commission to actually make decisions about lot splits, rather than having a strict set of guidelines. And then, you could actually look at the plan for the houses that were going to be put on that lot split and say yes or no, depending upon whether they fit in with the neighborhood or not. That may be an alternative that the future commission could...
The problem with, you know, stuff like that is that the more discretion you provide, the more likelihood you result in arbitrariness. I mean, we, we just heard about, from Christian, about a house that was approved that was three times the size. I, you know, I just, in front of the RDRC, we just had a meeting, and we denied a house that was twice the size, in part because it was twice the size. I mean, there is an argument that could be made that when you have subjective standards like "too big," that you create uncertainty and arbitrariness in decision-making. So, that's the challenge.
Yeah, I find that challenging personally. If I have a subjective standard saying "big," that is very subjective, but if I have, you know, actual numbers, quantitative information, I lean towards what the quantitative guidelines are, because that is not subjective. And, and so, I think that there's value in further defining numerically what's allowed and not allowed, or tightening up the criteria.
Or even the character of the neighborhood always, always kills me, because that, that's definitely one of those terms that could be interpreted many, many ways.
Especially when you're looking at transitions in neighborhoods, yeah.
I'll just jump in real quick, since we're doing subdivision size, on a question I had for staff that maybe you can come back with. About how many, I guess, pre-existing lots were out of conformance with the 10,000-square-foot requirement prior to 2011? So, I guess what I'm asking is, how many 5,000-square-foot lots did we have prior to 2011? Just, that would give me an indication of why, sort of where the mindset was going to create the standard. And I guess the second question would be, how many 40-square-foot width lots in San Carlos existed prior to 2011? And the reason that I ask is that I think it's important that we figure out how, how we got here. And I know that many people in the audience and people on the dais have already brought up that part of the reason we've got here is the economic situation has changed. Part of the reason we, we've gotten here is that you, you don't necessarily notice things until they're built. So, on that note, I did want to ask a little bit about process and outreach. Many of the members of the audience had said that they hadn't heard about the zoning changes. So, I just want to be clear, how many zoning meetings were there prior to the 2011 zoning update? I think I counted 11 public meetings. Am I wrong? I was, I was just getting on the commission midway through.
Through the chair. So, you mean just for the zoning update in 2011?
Right. And that doesn't include, my next question would be the general plan meeting that sort of, the general plan meetings that sort of set the stage for the zoning meetings. I want to say there were 30?
There were 71 for the general plan and at least 11 for the zoning ordinance. Yeah. So, and it, you know, I think one speaker said, "We're doing a better job now getting to people, and perhaps we're, people are connecting with the city in a better way too, because of those efforts." But, you know, historically, we, you know, that's, we do hear that, "Oh, we didn't know." But a lot of people do. So, it's always a balancing, you know, we do the best, we, we've historically done the best we can. We've used all the resources that we've had. So, that's, you know, we're, we're doing a better job than, than we used to.
Right. And technology is certainly helping that, and, and indeed, to back, to piggyback off of Shannon's comment, the enlarging the noticing requirement, something we've discussed many times, I think would also...
I don't even know how many times. A lot of times.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, I just wanted to, to put that out there, again, to kind of understand how we got here. I know we're going to have a lot of other conversations in the future, so some of the stuff I've written down, I will save. But one of the things I want to know is, because I was just getting on the commission at the time, I'm, I'm curious as to the rationale behind the decision to do the lot splits, and also into the decisions to make the lot coverage percentage increases. Again, I'm wondering if we had a lot of non-conformity, and if this just made more sense to bring more properties into conformity, or if maybe there were a lot of homeowner requests that we weren't able to meet without a variance, and this would make it so that they didn't need one. In my opinion, maybe it was, maybe it was intended for some neighborhoods with denser coverage, but is having the unintended consequence of changing the character of other neighborhoods that, or other blocks that it wasn't intended for. I guess, back when I was Chair, which was almost about two years ago, I know I pondered at a public meeting whether our housing zoning codes were having some unintended consequences. And I know that, for me in particular, the concern was that the code was lending itself towards a particular style of design. And if you watch us on Channel 27 intently, you will know that that's a common theme of mine, but...
Angela has three craftsmen's right by her house. Three, three brand-new...
Three folk craftsmen.
They're probably 12,000-square-foot craftsmen right by her house.
But, they've all gone up recently, I will say this. But, my concern was, was that maybe it's, because it's the same style of house, it might be making some of our blocks look a little bit like a tract community. There were other concerns also about sizing and mass, and the reason I mention this is that I, I want you to know that that's something that we have discussed. It's not something that hasn't come up. I'm glad it's coming to a head, and I'm glad we're going to be able to move forward and make some recommendations. But I just wanted to state that. Also, just simply because the picture was brought up of the colonial and the very nice-looking craftsman right next to it, just know that I will be bringing pictures of my own that will show different, much prettier colonials, to show the difference left and right, and maybe also some other housing styles that I think that the code unintentionally disallows. Having said all that, I think everything else I have written can be said to staff individually so that we can look up for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, we're done with that? For now. So, thank you, everyone. I'm actually going to take a break before the public hearing. It's a five-minute break, so we can...
Jesse, unless you want to talk about trees.
Yeah, let's talk about trees.
will show different, much prettier colonials, to show the difference left and right, and maybe also some other housing styles that I think that the code unintentionally disallows. Having said all that, I think everything else I have written can be said to staff individually so that we can look up for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're done with that? For now. So thank you, everyone. I'm actually going to take a break before the public hearing. It's a five-minute break, so we can...
Jesse, unless you want to talk about trees.
Yeah, let's talk about trees.
And specifically sort of walk you through the process for another recommendation to the city council. So when the city council first introduced the idea of regulating formula business uses in the downtown core in late 2015, that was to allow the public forum to weigh in on the, you know, different formula uses proposed in the downtown and also to preserve the unique small town charm of downtown San Carlos. Before those regulations were adopted in March of 2016, so just a few months ago, the city did not have the authority to impose conditions on formula business uses if the use was otherwise permitted. So this gave the public and the council pause as new development was happening in the Laurel Street corridor. And as a result of these regulations, formula business uses are now regulated on a temporary basis. So the city council passed ordinance 1502, which regulates the formula business uses in the downtown core area, but with a sunsetting provision. So those, those regulations will expire in September. So that's why we're before you today. The council would like to act on whether or not to extend or make those regulations permanent, and so your recommendation at this point is needed. So just as a brief recap of the timeline, the urgency ordinance was passed in November. Staff engaged the public in January. In February, the planning commission decided not to recommend zoning ordinance amendments to the city council, but did provide some feedback on language in the actual ordinance amendments. And then today, we're before you again, as the council would like to extend the ordinance that was adopted, or perhaps make it permanent, or allow it to sunset. And so your feedback is required at this point. And then city council will take up action in later this month, perhaps, perhaps not. And then in September, the ordinance 1502 will expire. So here's a slide that outlines the feedback that was originally received from the planning commission in February. There were drafting changes to the language, like I mentioned, that were also recommended, and those were incorporated into the ordinance introduced to council, and those were adopted. So these regulations require that any business meeting the definition in this slide and wishing to locate in the downtown core area must apply for a conditional use permit, which requires a public hearing and planning commission approval. So that's 15 businesses in the U.S., or 15 locations of a business in the U.S. that are required by contract business model or practice, and that was a line that the planning commission recommended, in addition to increasing the number of businesses from 10 to 15, that are required to maintain sort of standardized characteristics. They would qualify as a formula business. And these regulations apply to businesses that wish to locate in the downtown core area, which we've defined as the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of Laurel Street, the 1,100 block of San Carlos Avenue, and just the south side of the 1,200 block of San Carlos Avenue. The regulations also apply to new businesses wishing to come in, existing businesses wishing to relocate within this area, and then also existing businesses wishing to expand by 10% or more. So to approve a conditional use permit for a formula business use, the planning commission would need to make all of the standard conditional use permit findings, in addition to these three listed here, which are created just for formula business uses. And again, there were some tweaks to the language that the planning commission recommended in February, and those were incorporated and are reflected in these adopted findings. So the next steps are that staff will report on the planning commission's recommendation on whether or not to extend, make permanent, or allow to sunset these regulations. And then the city council, if they decide to introduce an ordinance, will probably do so on June 13th, following a public hearing. And then any adoption of an ordinance would probably be on June 27th. That way, the regulations will take effect before the older regulations expire on September So staff recommends that the planning commission provide the city council with a recommendation as to whether or not they should extend the regulations on formula business uses, and you can suggest a number of months or years to extend them, make them permanent, or allow them to sunset. So you'll notice in the, included with the staff report are three resolution options, and the motions on page four of the staff report lay out the three options provided in those resolutions, which, those draft resolutions, which are to extend, make permanent, or allow to sunset the formula business regulations that were adopted in March. And that is all I've got for you.
I have to say, I feel wholly unprepared to, to make a decision on this at this point. I don't know that enough time has passed. So I guess I'm, I'm a little confused and even concerned about the timing that it's being brought to us. Is there a reason that it's being brought so soon?
Yeah, so when city council adopted the ordinance in March, the sunset deadline that they assigned to it was September 13th, 2016. So for the ordinance, any replacement language, or even extending the existing zoning ordinance amendments, they must be introduced, and then at the subsequent meeting, adopted, and then there's a 30-day waiting period before they take effect. Because of the summer break, traditionally taken at the end of July, early August, these have to be, if there's going to be action before ordinance 1502 expires, it must be taken sort of June, July, in order for it to take effect.
So it's the city council's summer break that's, that's kind of the timing?
And the deadline.
And the deadline. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry, just go ahead.
Does EDAC, are there minutes done from that meeting? Because that just happened, right?
It just happened last week. They haven't approved the minutes yet, and I included a summary in the staff report.
Where is that, in the staff report?
It was under background, basically.
What? I must have missed it.
It's the third paragraph under background, but the Economic Development Advisory Commission, yeah, had a pretty extensive conversation on this. There were five of the members in attendance that day, and three voted in support of extending it, and two against.
Now, part of that presentation, I know we talked last time when we're talking about, there was the initial go around, we're talking about, was it Los Gatos that has something very similar to this, that we were supposed to get some data on?
Los Gatos is the one that was thinking about
Rescinding.
rescinding theirs, and I don't believe any action's been taken on theirs.
I, I still feel that, I think we can accomplish the same thing that we're trying to do by, by design elements, instead of, instead of conditional use permits, because I'm still concerned about restricting, restricting, you know, some of our local businesses for, I think it's making it too difficult for them to, to go through the process to get tenants in here. I have the same concerns as I did last time. I just don't think we've got the best solution in front of us yet, and I don't know how to get to the best solution, other than
Public comment. Yeah, we do have public comment. I just wanted to quickly, for staff right now, then we'll get to public comment.
Right, I just have one question for staff before public comment, and sorry if, if I altered that at all. Do we have any new data at all from the three months this has been in place here in San Carlos with how it's worked, or what the consequences have been?
The only application that we've received was during the urgency ordinance period, and that was the one that the planning commission reviewed and approved at the same meeting in February 16th. So that's really the only data point we have to go off of.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to open it to public hearing. I have two speaker cards. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this matter? And if so, if I can have, if there's any more, they might have been all gone from the study session, so, great, thank you. So I'm going to start with Les Girdlestone. You've been waiting very patiently to speak.
No problem. Democracy at work. It's not a problem. I'm Les Girdlestone. I'm here representing the Girdlestone Family Trust, which has three buildings on the 700 block of Laurel Street, and I spoke before you on the prior meeting. Thank you for voting four to one in recommending that the council not approve. Real quick data point, which wasn't in my, there was one lady who applied to Expedia. I met with her at a chamber meeting on Friday. She said that she already had her lease signed contractor to build out her space when this came down, and the city still made her pay $8,600, and she said she never would come to San Carlos if she had to pay the $8,600. That's the feedback. Okay. I sent a letter to you with regards to the core areas in four different businesses, or it is, four different cities up and down the peninsula. I'm not advocating that all those franchise formula businesses come to San Carlos, but I'm advocating is, they work well, they coexist with mom and pop stores, single sole proprietorship businesses. I don't see a problem with that. With regards to the core formula businesses, San Carlos has had those in the past. Since I've been here for 63 years, a few examples, if you will. We used to have a Safeway grocery store on the 800 block of San, on Laurel Street, where Chase Bank sits now. We used to have a Rexall drugstore, national chain, where La Bla Jerie is. We used to have a Napa Auto Supply Store on the 700 block, where there's a restaurant now. We used to have a Merle Norman cosmetic store in the 600 block. We used to have a Woolworths store here. The reason I bring that up, they've all gone, they've all been changed, economic forces at work without city policies and rules and reviews, economic forces, the citizens will vote with their wallets. Now, the city of San Carlos has handled individual problems downtown, if you will, on a very finite basis. So a while back, we were concerned about banks being downtown. So the city handled that with a single ordinance. They were concerned about hair salons and nail salons, very finite, they handled that. Then it became secondhand stores or dollar stores, and they handled that. Each individual problem, a very finite scope, was taken care of, resolved to the satisfaction of the citizens in the city, without a broad-based overall ordinance covering way too much, too large of a scope. I think overall, there's three things that could possibly happen with the passage of this ordinance. The number one thing is the city of San Carlos will be sending a huge message out to the business community of the unwelcome mat. City of San Carlos will not be easy to deal with, we really don't want you down here. The lady who owns the bund cake says she would never put up the $8,600. The Expedia lady says she would never have done it. So the unintended consequences, you're telling people not to come here, but you don't know who's not going to apply. In this case, you would have essentially maybe discriminated against two women-owned businesses. So you don't know who you're telling not to come. I don't know who the big next franchise is. We don't know, the city doesn't know. Second point is, if the ordinance pass, the city of downtown is going to be restaurants and mom and pop shops. Not a big recipe for a thriving downtown area. The third one that really scares us to no end is, if you pass this ordinance, you are one ordinance away from a city council saying, we want complete control of all rents in the downtown core area. So if you pass this, they'll say, well, instead of formula and franchise, why aren't we looking at everything that comes into the downtown core area? So, thank you for your service, and thank you for hearing me out again. My recommendation is let this sunset, and there's always a way to handle certain problems on a finite basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez and Planning Commission members. It's actually fun being on the side of the table, for a change.
Give him two minutes.
I brought my own timer. I knew you were going to say that, David.
You know me too well.
Yes. I really appreciate you taking this issue up and revisiting it, particularly on the accelerated timeframe that was driven by the council's scheduling and whatnot. And I just have a couple of basic points to make. I think, as you all know, I'm, I was not in favor of this ordinance and opposed it when it was adopted. And a big part of that is, when you go back and look at the stated goals that were aimed at being accomplished by this ordinance, things like managing the appearance of the downtown, so we don't have Burger Kings and McDonald's and all sorts of corporate plastic logos all over the place, enhancing economic health, keeping a balanced mix of businesses, and one that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but is a big issue for a lot of residents in town, of not having huge stores like Targets and Walmarts opening up on Laurel Street. Those things have actually absolutely nothing to do with who owns a business, okay? And I will tell you, as a former finance, retired finance executive who spent way more time over the years working with people like Greg Rubens in the legal profession than I should have, there are all sorts of ways of getting around any kind of definition of ownership that you want to have. But more important than that, these issues are not related to ownership, okay? And I'll come back to that in a second, but while the intent of the ordinance may be to regulate these things, it doesn't really actually do that. And there are other ways of regulating those that we should perhaps take advantage of. Los Gatos has been mentioned a couple of times, and I actually spent about an hour or so on the phone with the economic development person from Los Gatos, and she told me a bunch of really interesting things. They do have an ordinance, a formula business ordinance, they have had it since, I think, 2007, 2008, shortly before the time of the Great Recession. They have only denied one chain store application in all that time. And the most interesting thing to me was, she said, and actually, we're really glad that we had formula businesses during the Great Recession, because they saved our downtown. And her point to me was, we have a lot of really neat mom and pop shops, but they don't have the marketing and branding capability to go out there and have a presence. People come to our downtown because they know that Williams Sonoma is there. And then they go, hey, that's a cool store, I'll go in there. So it's actually, the mix is the thing that actually attracts people there. So I'd ask you to keep that in mind, too. Couple of people have talked about how, you know, what are the consequences of doing something like this? And I think, and, you know, will we see, have we seen results so far? I don't think you'll ever actually see results. You won't see the consequences, you won't see the businesses that don't come here, okay? And you, it may turn out during the next Great Recession, or the next business downturn, that you'll go, G wires, our downtown got all these shuttered businesses. And that's when you'll, that's when you'll see it. So in closing, what I guess I'd ask everybody to think about is, years ago, there was a famous football running back, I wish I remembered his name, who had a penchant for always running straight down the field. And apparently, he was pretty successful at this. And an interviewer once asked him, why don't you do like a lot of other running backs do and run side to side? And he goes, why bother running side to side when you can run straight down the field? So if we want to manage things like the appearance of our downtown and keep it from being overwhelmed by shtick, you know, that doesn't fit, or if we want to make sure that big stores don't open up, let's regulate that. Interestingly enough, Los Gatos has a regulation, which if you open up, if you want to open up a business of more than 7,000 square foot in their retail core, you have to get a conditional use permit to do that, precisely for that reason, because they want to encourage a diversity of ownership. Anyway, thank you for your time, and good luck with your debate.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vic Belusian.
As I mentioned last time, I own 1125, 1135 San Carlos Avenue. That was the location of my former restaurant, which I had for 32 years. I bought the building in 76, exactly 40 years ago. I'm by no means wealthy or huge property owner. It's my sole retirement plan. I've always been a small business operator since I was 20 years old. I'm 61, still a small business operator. I view my building as my retirement plan, and as selfish as this sounds like, I have to say, it would personally affect my retirement. And I do want to also mention that many of these small buildings, and I go back to 40 years, I know a lot of these property owners are not really huge property owners, they aren't huge people, they're just, some of them are like me, had a restaurant or a business there, and they've kept the building, and some of them just own one or two. And it is a source of income for them. Jeopardizing this would really be detrimental to our, our future. The second thing I want to say is that not every chain operation is necessarily as bad as McDonald's or Burger King. I would never expect the city to allow them. Anyway, I think some of them are useful businesses, are very nice. I personally patronize them all the time, and they're valuable businesses, and at times they look no different than some of the boutique businesses we have here in San Carlos. To be honest, to my opinion, the scale of businesses now in downtown is so high that I'm not 100% sure if some of those chains want to come here, because they probably have a hard time competing with the quality and the class of businesses we offer here. I don't think it's a huge threat, but some scrutiny can be, can be placed, I think, to pick and choose, and perhaps a different scenario can be brought up, or set of decision-making tools that you can allow some of these chains to operate, and maybe not the big McDonald's and the Burger Kings, but other smaller ones that are useful. And also, that would be a huge help for some of the smaller operators, smaller owners of these buildings, such as my cousin and I. He's going to speak next, and he owns the Drake Building, and he has the same issues that I have. So I, I do recommend that you put this into the sunset, but if you have to keep it, then I would recommend that you scrutinize it a little bit more, to not make it so thorough that it completely disallows many, many valuable businesses that can come and can be beneficial to our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rubik Gregorian.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Rubik Gregorian, and I, like Vic said, and last time I said, I owned a building on the corner of San Carlos and El Camino, it's also known as the Drake Building. I bought it in 1997, and a lot of good things have been said today, I won't repeat. I agree with all of them, what Vic said and the prior speakers. There's one more issue that I want to bring up, and that is the, the location and the rentability of a building, and which is very important. Specifically, talking about my own building, the corner of San Carlos and El Camino is a very tough location for retail business. I bought the building in 1997, and from 1997 to 2010, in that 13-year period, I had 18 tenants who came and left that building. And most of them were, had problems with parkings or any, any problems. So I think the corner store, which is very, on the corner of El Camino and San Carlos, it is basically suitable for a business that needs the visibility. And it's, right now, it's the AT&amp;T store, and the lease will be over in a couple of years, but I think I probably have a lot of difficulty if I wanted to limit my options to just stores that are not formula business, as you call them. The other thing is that the process for getting a permit for a formula business is really not realistic. I think, assuming that a chain store will come and pay $8,600, which they can afford, but, and wait for three months to get a approval, and if at the end of the three months they don't get any approval, the landlord has lost three months of rent, and then they have to go through the process one more time. And if it's a chain store, but it's a franchise, normally they are like private people who cannot afford to pay $8,600 and wait for three months. So I think, overall, by adopting this regulation, it is basically saying that we will not have any formula business in downtown. That's, that's what it means. So I really hope that you would allow that to, or you would recommend the city council to allow it to sunset. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this matter? And when you're done, can you fill out a speaker form? Thank you.
So my name is Brian Kimmel, and I live at 2072 Greenwood, and I've owned Clock Tower Music, which is just down here on the 600 block, for the last 25 years. And my wife and I have run it, we've been doing it for, the business together's been together for 32 years. So we've been through a lot of change, and we've, it's taken us a long time to grow and to get onto the main drag. Our business is really a niche. It's really a small, selective people that really appreciate and love music, and so we've spent a lot of time supporting that, but it's not, doesn't bring a lot of equity, a lot of, a lot of money. So we do sacrifice quite a bit to be where we are. And we're for the formula stores to, we're for that, to extend the prohibition of them so they won't come in, for a few reasons. When I look at a formula store's ability to, to take a location, they can produce, they can basically keep a corporate identity and pay the high rent that's going to be imposed when small businesses won't have the opportunity, basically, to come in. And also, the mix for the 700 block is roughly about 27 independent stores and five franchiser formula stores. So as that is a model for the 600 block, we already have three to four locations that are now formula stores, we pretty much have that mix. So allowing more diversity in the community is, is more needed, I think. I think it's, by sticking an Apple Store in the middle, just an example, they're all corporate, they all look the same, there's no individual, I think, as far as putting a value on the aesthetics of it, and not on the individual business, how they can deliver to the community, is kind of short-sighted. With us, we, we actually, she runs all the music for the hometown days, we develop, we donate our time, we have customers that come in, they go through several generations that start out as young music makers, they have kids, they come in, so they really get a community sense in our store. And just preserving our location and some of the other small stores in town seems like it's, it's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
You mean, does it, do we have to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we do. Hold on a minute.
Yeah. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harper Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay, who would like to start?
I mean, I was opposed before. I don't have any new information that would make me in favor of it now. I mean, it's, I'm intrigued by the suggestion of maybe an alternative ordinance, which isn't before us today, but, you know, that attacks, what I understood was the real issue, which was a concern that a bunch of tenants would get kicked out, and a property would get merged to put in a giant superstore. That's what I thought was the concern, and so requiring a conditional use permit for some size of store is actually fairly appealing. I'd also observe, it's actually really nice that, you know, we, we voted to oppose the ordinance, but we made some suggested changes, and even though the city council didn't take our recommendation, they did take our recommended changes, which actually, I thought was government at work, I did want to observe that, it was very nice. So in the spirit of that, I actually wonder if the, if the city council really does believe this is a good idea, whether they should also consider adding Cherry to it? I mean, and this comes from someone who really doesn't like the ordinance. My understanding is that the rationale for including San Carlos Avenue was that it was sort of the gateway, and with the, with the change that we're making in the transit village, and I understand there's going to be a new cross at Cherry, that's going to be a new conduit, potentially as well, to the folks who may be coming from the east side. So to the extent that they're trying to capture those areas that are a gateway, I think they should consider adding Cherry. But that said, I, I'm opposed.
Well, and I feel the opposite about Cherry and San Carlos Avenue. So as you guys know, I came down, just barely, but I came down on the other side of this issue, when we saw this just a couple months ago. And the reason I did is that I, I feel, I felt, and I still do feel, that we have the right as citizens to have a say in our downtown, that it's a special space, that it's a public space where we come together as a community, and it's not just a place where businesses operate in a vacuum. And because it is a special segment of our community, I believe it does warrant a higher level of scrutiny. Having said that, I've also, I had also stated many of the concerns that my fellow commissioners had. had with this particular ordinance, including the cost being $8,600 and how that would hurt particularly small business franchise businesses coming to the area. The timeline, the amount of time it takes to get through the process. Oh gee, what else did I say? Lots of other things, design and signage. One of the other things I also said was that I would rather get this right and did not want to rush this through, and I feel the same way tonight. I'm not, I don't feel we have enough information to make a different decision. So, that having been said, I'm going to make some suggestions, but I may opt on abstaining. I just don't feel I have the information to make a recommendation. One of the recommendations I would make though, should the city council choose to adopt it, is to exclude San Carlos Avenue from the formula business ordinance. And for those commissioners that don't know, I actually went and spoke to the city council as a private citizen afterwards because it was something that had occurred to me later, later after we had discussed the issue. I feel that San Carlos commercial property is a lot like a monopoly board and Boardwalk is not the same as Marvin's Garden. And when you turn the corner, I think you have a much more difficult time renting the area on San Carlos Avenue than you do renting, say, the very center of the core of Laurel Street. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys heard that objection as well, and I'm hoping that the city council, if they do decide to move forward with the ordinance, will take that into consideration. I am also very intrigued by a potential different way to regulate some of these concerns. Thank you.
I don't want to, I just echo a lot of the same concerns I had at the last meeting. I don't know what's changed, really. Nothing's really changed, except we've had some time go by. And I think at that last meeting, I did talk a little bit about the timing behind processing that, and I think at that meeting, it was four to six weeks, and now we're looking at a staff report that says 10 to 14 weeks, which is just too long for a tenant to wait for, and not to mention the cost associated with that, for a possibility. It's too long for a landlord to wait and it's too long for a tenant to wait. And I don't see anything different, so my position really hasn't changed because I don't have anything else to, that could change it. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Shannon?
I'm still where I was too. I feel that a lot of these things, at least can be handled with design elements or separate, I mean, just like the, Councilmember Oble was discussing, you know, the Los Gatos or Los Altos ordinance for, you know, requiring a conditional use permit at a certain square foot level, something that might be entertained, but I think it just puts too much of a burden on the, you know, our businesses downtown or the property owners downtown in order to keep renters in there, especially on San Carlos Avenue. I don't think it's going to solve the problem, I didn't think it would before. I mean, I'd be open to hearing other options, and this is something I've thought about quite a bit and haven't come up with a better solution. I don't know if there are better solutions out there, but right now, I still see this as too prohibitive.
Scott, I know you have comments.
Shortcut comments. I was opposed to this last time, I'm still opposed to it. I just think it's a bad idea. You know, my big issue with the downtown is just being able to walk on the sidewalks. So, that's, this isn't going to address that.
I'll make the motion, but yeah, I would observe, my hope is that with Transit Village and the change in parking, the parking situation with the additional spots in the lot, that the situation may improve for the businesses on San Carlos Avenue. But in any event, I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council allow the amendments to chapters 18.05, 18.23, and 18.41 of the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code originally adopted, and ordinance 1502 to define formula businesses and establish a permit process for formula business uses in the downtown core area to sunset on September 13th of 2016.
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson? Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Thank you. Moving along to the next item. Item B 2911 Appian Way, APN 050204350. Consideration of Request for Design Review Approval to Change the Approved Colors of the Main Residence. It's been a long wait. Thank you.
I'm Andrea Martasich, Assistant Planner, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. This is a request for design review approval for the exterior colors of the house at 2911 Appian Way. On October 20th, 2008, the Planning Commission approved a new single-family residence at this address, as well as a grading and dirt hole certificate. The original conditions of approval required that any substantive changes to the materials or color be re-reviewed by the Planning Commission, and that is why this item is before you again this evening. The house has already been constructed and as such, staff asked the property owner to provide a rendering showing what the house would look like with the colors as approved by the commission in 2008. So, this here is the houses built with the colors as approved shown on the house. However, the applicant or the owner built the house to these colors. So, this evening, the applicant and owner is asking that the commission approve these two colors, which are the terracotta and gray, as the exterior colors for the home. And as I mentioned, they are installed. So, this is a photograph of the residence as it is today. It is close to being able to be finalized, one of the items would be the color, and they also do need to install some additional landscaping, so that's not shown on here yet. And one thing I just wanted to point it out, point out in terms of design review, the horizontal striping was approved in 2008 by the commission, so the design review this evening is really limited to the colors themselves and not the banding. If the commission wanted to deny the application, so deny the colors as installed, then the commission could request that the applicant and owner install the colors as originally approved in 2008. In terms of the zoning compliance, the municipal code doesn't say too much about colors for single-family residences unless they're located within the hillside. And this slide talks about what is required by the zoning code. Primarily darker tones, including earth tones, should be used for building walls and roofs on highly visible sites so that the structures appear to blend in with the terrain. The owner provided pictures, which were in your staff report. However, the format you have here is what the owner actually prepared with the maps and arrows, so it might be a little bit more cohesive, as well as material of the two stucco colors, which is up at the dais. In terms of neighborhood comments, we did send out the 300-foot public notice and the property owner also conducted outreach. We did receive, as of the writing of the report, 10 emails of support for the existing terracotta and gray color banding, and one letter of concern, all of which were included in your packet. Today, we also received three additional emails in support of the existing colors. We tried to figure out where, you know, what neighbors were making which comments. A lot of the emails came from different locations throughout the city, and at least two of them were unidentifiable in terms of what property they represented. But of the ones we could figure out, they are shown on this map and they're the ones that are closest to the residence. So, on this map, you'll see the yellow is the subject property. The green stars represent the neighbors who are supportive of the colors as installed and proposed this evening. And the red star represents the neighbor who has concerns with the colors as installed. These are the findings that must be considered when contemplating a design review approval. In this case, as I mentioned before, the approval would be only for the color itself. The staff report itself outlines the different findings, general plan policies that apply to development within hillside areas, as well as the designer view criteria applicable to the project. And staff has prepared two separate motions, depending on how you wanted to vote this evening. So, the first motion we have is if you move to approve this item, so approve the colors as installed, the terracotta and gray. And then, we also have a motion for denial, which would be to deny the colors as installed and require them to reinstall the colors as approved in 2008. I'm available for any questions. The property owner is also here as well.
Any questions for staff right now?
So, this would be an example of flag lot, based on the diagram, looks like this is our, this would be a flag lot?
Do we have any questions relative to the colors? Okay.
I have questions for the commission that approved it yellow.
Well, they're no longer on the commission anymore, so. All right, so I've got three.
Eight years to build this house.
I'll have the owner answer that.
Back in 2006, when we purchased the lot, we had about a year in architecture and then San Carlos was having its financial difficulties. So, we had a wonderful planner for about nine months, and she found out there was going to be layoffs and she left and went to Hillsborough. In the next year and year, 15 months or so, we had four more planners. And finally, we made some calls and said, "Look, you know, are we approved?" And it went up in front of planning and we were approved at that time. And then, we spent another three years, the same issues were with the building department, they were very short-staffed, it came down to a single plan checker, and it took us three years to get through building. No significant changes or anything to the plans, just it took a long time, a lot of reviews and questions back and forth, and it kept on going through, and then we finally got approval for that, we started construction. And so, then we were, we were three years in construction. So, during that time, you saw the yellows, also, but during that time, thank you very much to the city, now we've had a lot of interaction with you and you've been very helpful, and so, we're hoping this can kind of close that out. During the construction of our house, we noticed the large, I believe it's a condominium complex across the hillside, and I've got the picture here of that. The yellowness of it stood out to us. And when we presented the colors originally, we put them as a proposed color package. We thought that there were other colors, we included some color chips, but we also included some renderings, which had terracotta, terracotta, another banding with it, and there was also some grays in the package. So, we thought that using the terracotta and all would be appropriate, but we found out later that, that planning felt that it wasn't a color chip that was provided, so that's what has put us here. So, we were trying to, we were trying really to not stand out, not be a bumblebee, and as we got on the property, we kind of saw the hillside and the rest, and as we came up Britain, we saw that probably yellow would make it stand out even more, so we made that change, thinking that we were within the bounds of our proposed colors. But it appears that that was not the case, and so, we're here in front of you today asking for approval of the colors that we did color the house with. I think, you know, I was, I had not seen the letter until it was put into the package with the one complaint. And after that, I think I wanted to add a little bit of context to that letter because I think it's important. The Gardellas are on almost a two-acre property. It's two parcels, I believe it's a little over two acres, and we are on an acre property, so our homes are not close together. Here's on Google Maps, they have a measurement tool, and that measurement tool allows you to measure, and it shows from their house to our house, where they took the picture, approximately 150 feet. Actually, it has 158, but we'll give some error, 150 feet or so. And the picture was taken right at the edge of their fence, and that's about 50 feet from our house. So, we can, I'm not unable to see their house from our home. I would expect it to be the same since, if I can see it, then they should be it and vice versa. Also, their house is below ours, about 40 feet below ours. There are extensive oak trees in between. And we know, we know, one of our subcontractors, our AV subcontractor often worked off hours because he had better access to the house. And during that time, people would often enter the property and not wanting to be responsible for anything that could have happened at that time, he would just take pictures. So, whenever he saw anything odd, he would take pictures. And so, we know that Mrs. Gardella took the picture there because he actually was there working and captured her through the window, taking pictures of our house. So, that's how I know the picture was taken there. So, you know, we seemed to have had very positive input when the city council, when the Planning Commission originally met, I believe it was three families showed up and they expressed concerns about potential landsites and all, and that was alleviated through the engineering work that was done and all that. But we had a public outreach where we were requested to be onsite at the property for three hours, I believe it was three hours, two or three hours. And my wife and I went out to the property and the only, the only family to show up was the Waldishmitz. And so, this is, you know, during that whole time, the complaint had never, didn't come to the Planning Commission, didn't come to the community outreach, and now has come out now, just before the house is finished. But we feel that the colors of the house now better fit the environment. If you really want us to paint it yellow, you know, we could paint it yellow. I think you might have more people coming to the Planning Commission, but that's it. And if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for staff, but not for the applicant. So, we no longer specify any, we no longer specify color. I guess when this came through, this is back when we did have a say in color. So, how does that work if something's conditioned with something that is no longer a code?
Yes, good question, Commissioner Bergman. To answer your question for single-family residential development, there is no, currently on the books, there is no requirement or specifications for colors. As you know, for other types of larger projects, we do, and often, you know, guide applicants with respect to colors and materials. The reason this is before the commission this evening is because this was a condition of approval that was made back in 2008. So, those conditions still stand with the project. So, when, I know, fast forward, you know, to today, we're looking at the applicant's request, we always go back to the original conditions of approval to see if there's any mention of whatever issue might be requested of us. And so, because we determined that there was a condition specifying certain colors that it would need to be brought back to the, to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
I've got three speakers for this item, which is surprising to me, but okay. First speaker, Bernita Ballbuck.
Hi, I'm Bernita Ballbuck. I live on 1043 Drake Court and I support the terracotta color.
Claire Gardella?
Excuse me, it seems like I'm the one that, the culprit that took the picture from my property of the house that is supposed to blend in to the hillside. Obviously, this does not blend into the hillside. We now have a red and white striped lighthouse next to our property. And no, we cannot see it from our house. We do see it if we go 10 feet out of our house, where we used to entertain in our patio, and now we're looking at this. I think, yes, I have a huge objection to this. This house was put very close, on a huge lot, it was put very close to the back of the lot, so that it's taken away our privacy. I mean, obviously, if we're sitting up where we often have sat to have a glass of wine and look at our view, and they can hear... and look at our view, and they can hear every word we're saying, yes, our privacy has been invaded. But to invade it with such ugly colors, I mean, a striped house, how does a stripe blend into the hillside? It doesn't. Red, terracotta, red and gray, they don't blend into the hillside. These people have stripped that property, so there is not a tree standing, nor a bush, only weeds, which we see plenty of, although they cut some down the other day. We were also told that they were going to be putting trees in, what, 27-inch plots, and bringing them onto the property, and that certainly hasn't happened. That's all I have to say. I think that it's really a pity that, I don't care what you have said, that it's okay for them to do, stripes do not fit in San Carlos. And I can bring up an awful lot of people that would say the same thing. And ugly stripes?
So that's not...
I think it's, I think it's a real disgrace, what you've done.
I appreciate your comments, but that's, what's before us is the color only, that's all we're talking about here. Did you prefer yellow over terracotta?
I can see the look at it.
Okay. Any other, any other person want to speak on this matter? Can I get a motion, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I'm sorry about that. Did you fill out a speaker?
I did.
It's been a long night. I'm sorry.
It has, and tomorrow, we all get to get up early and vote.
Yeah.
It's election day.
Didn't we all vote by mail?
Yeah.
Good for you.
You'll make my day a little bit easier. My name is Jim Hauer, and I'm a resident here of San Carlos, and I live up on, presently up on Crestview, but had been a resident on Britton Avenue up at the top. And this is a trek that I make quite often, and I would like to say that I'm very much in support of the color scheme, and in support of the investment, and the wonderful things that this family brings to our community. As far as blending in with the hillside, it is, if you take a step back from standing underneath it, and you're at the road, or you're even on the freeway, it blends in wonderfully. And the color scheme in terracotta, I think, is a complement to the structure, as well as to the environment that it's in. I definitely support approving the change in color.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Who would like to start?
I'll say. You know, I don't love the banding, and I do see the Gardella's concern about the opinion of it not blending in the hillside, but if our choice is yellow stripes or terracotta stripes, I vote terracotta stripes.
And that's, I mean, that's where I am as well. I mean, I don't want to make light of Ms. Gardella's concerns. I read her letter. You know, I understand that she has concerns, but the only issue before us is whether it's yellow or terracotta. We can't affect the stripes. We can't do anything other than decide yellow or terracotta, and I think terracotta is an improvement, a significant improvement.
As do I.
So, I mean, can I just make a motion? I don't want to cut anybody off.
The only thing I have to say is that I was the one who, and Bonnie reminds me of it every time color comes up, I was the one who pushed not allowing anybody to tell you what color house you should have in the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So I don't believe we should tell these individuals what color house they should have. I think they should make that decision themselves. That being said, I'm not really thrilled with banding, but I wish there were a way we could go back to all the previous projects and actually see if there's a way to change that, so that color, that those individuals are not held to the colors that were approved in previous plan developments or projects.
I move that the planning commission approve the request of Christopher Ken and Deborah Chang for design review approval to allow the exterior paint color as revised and installed at 2911 APN Way, APN 050-204-350, based on the required findings and information incorporated in the staff report.
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Thank you. So moving along, I just want to get everybody's kind of take on this. We're at 1018.
You know, how many, do we have speakers on this?
I don't have any speaker cards here yet. Of course, I don't even know if we have any more speaker cards to fill out.
My question here would be to planning staff, how busy is our meeting on the 20th?
On June 20th, we have design review for 2115 White Oak Way. You may recall, this was an item that was continued by the commission. It was approved as a subdivision, not appealed, and so the design of the homes are coming back before the commission for your review. We also have an application for Honda use permit. There's a modification to the original use permit based upon additional land that will be part of their application. And if you give me one second, I just need to confirm if there are any other items besides those on the 20th. I believe we have a use permit request for a commercial recreation facility that is scheduled to go before the commission as well. And there may be a possibility to bring back a request by R.D. Olson for the Landmark Hotel in regards to a sound wall.
I mean, so my take on this is like, I'd be willing to extend to 11 if we could finish it by 11, but I, you know, I'm concerned, and I don't say that with judgment, but, you know, based on Scott's comment, you know, whether he has, you know, a lot of things he wants to talk about with this item. Because if he does, I want him to have, well, he probably won't have that time, because he'll be off the commission when it comes before it again, but if we're going to hear it today, I want to give it its fair hearing. So, I mean, Scott, did you have a lot for this item?
No, I don't have that much. I think, what I wanted to do was to get a sense from the other commissioners whether they had item, issues, or things that they wanted to comment about.
I mean, I'd hear the presentation, but...
How long is the presentation?
I don't know how long the presentation is, but I'm thinking 40 minutes, start to finish, is probably not going to be enough time.
Okay. Well, then, we need to continue it to a date certain, but I don't know what date that's going to be.
Well, the next available meeting, or...
I mean, typically, what we do is when items, you know, get continued because of a timing issue like this, they can go on the next agenda. So I may need to work with some of the other applicants who have been in the queue. They may not be happy, but, you know, if an item has otherwise been on an agenda, but due to, you know, circumstances such as the number of speakers, et cetera, it needs to be continued, we can work with the applicant to get them on the next agenda. I believe Jill's presentation was not very long. I mean, you can state how many slides you have, but it's something that we've been working on, and we could feel we could get through it if the commission, you know, would consider that, given the length of the presentation, but it's up to you.
See where we get?
I'm okay either way.
Okay. Shannon?
I'd rather continue it.
Yeah, it's, it's a, this is a long meeting.
I don't know if I have enough frame power to give this to do its deserves. I'd rather be fresh and be able to come at it with...
Put it on the first agenda item on the 20th?
So that would, our next meeting is scheduled for June 20th. And I could always schedule a special meeting if that becomes necessary. Sometimes we have to do that. I think the applicant wants to say something, though. You can...
Sure.
Quickly, my name is John Baer, and this is Ken Hayes, the architect. We actually have a, we believe that this, our presentation and staff's presentation will be very short, and we would, and I'm concerned that Ken, the architect, will not be here on the 20th. Not that I want you to not have all the time to deliberate this, but I do think we can move this forward within 30, maybe 35 minutes, including all your comments, staff's comments. We just don't have that much to present or to discuss on this. If you'd be willing, we'd like to try to put it through today.
All right, we'll extend it till, well, let's get a motion to extend it to 11, and we'll try to get through what we can.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yep.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. I didn't even read the, I'm sorry, let's start off by reading what we're hearing here. 644-668 Laurel Street, APN 050-132-070, and 050-132-250, consideration of design review approval. Jill?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'll present to you the request for design review approval for a new second-floor office addition and major renovation to the existing tenant spaces at 644 to 668 Laurel Street. The subject site is Zoned MUDC, Mixed Use Downtown Core, and has a corresponding general plan land use designation of mixed-use medium density. The project site consists of two separate parcels. The parcel at 644 to 654 Laurel Street measures 10,803 square feet, and the parcel at 660 through 668 Laurel Street measures 8,028 square feet, respectively. There are currently eight tenant spaces with four per parcel. The existing Comerica Bank is excluded from the project.
Is that one of the eight? The Comerica Bank, is it one of the eight tenants?
Yes. When reconfigured, the project will consist of four new retail spaces and one restaurant. There will also be a new second-story office above 660 through 668 Laurel Street. Total square footage will be 22,785 square feet after the addition. The project meets all applicable standards except for the percentage of paving, number of trees, and parking. The project includes more than the standard 10% of paving and is short by one tree as required by code, so consideration of an alternative landscape plan is required. The intent was to provide landscaping at grade where there currently is none. The planting design utilizes a variety of plants, creating color and texture to complement the, complement the building design at the rear. 424-inch box crepe myrtles, plus a variety of low-water-use shrubs and ground cover will be used as well. The four street trees in front of the parcel are counted as toward the existing tree requirement, which is one tree per 2,000 square feet of lot covers, so they're short by one tree. The one additional tree cannot be planted onsite as access to the exterior, excuse me, at the interior at the rear would otherwise be compromised. Approval of the landscape plan, staff believes can be sorted by three out of the following criteria, 1, 4, and 6. So onsite parking cannot be accommodated. A parking in lieu fee may be paid to satisfy the parking requirement. Fees paid may be used for off-street parking facilities and transit passes. There was no additional parking necessary for 644 through 654 Laurel Street. Based on the proposed second-floor office at 660 through 668 Laurel, the project is nine spaces short. The fee is currently $17,936, excuse me, $36, with the cost-of-living adjustment. And note that the fee has not been updated itself since 2004, so this is just cost-of-living adjustment. Planning staff consulted with Public Works staff, who stated that they would not support parking in the, excuse me, bicycle parking in the right-of-way. So staff added a condition that would require the applicant to accommodate the four required short-term bicycle parking spaces onsite at the 660 through 668 Laurel Street property. This condition has been further modified to apply to 644 to 654 Laurel Street as well, so that short-term parking, bike parking can be accommodated anywhere on the project site. Please excuse me, it's been a long night. So these are the modified conditions of approval. The applicant wished to modify some of the conditions of approval. So 8C, you'll see that at the beginning of the statement says, "The applicant will work with the building official regarding the parapets." Number 20, "The ability to provide bike parking on either parcel is just mentioned." And number 21 clarifies the intent to pay fee for only 660 through 668 Laurel Street at time of permit issuance. So, because 644 through 654 does not require the fee. It also provides the option to provide off-site parking with review and approval of a minor use permit by the zoning administrator, should that ever become an option. So I'll now turn it over to the project architect. Oops. Yeah.
Audio 101. Is there a pointer?
So we're pulling up your presentation right now.
Good evening, Chair Gutierrez, members of the commission. My name is Ken Hayes with Hayes Group Architects. I'll be presenting the project on behalf of my client, JMS Development Partners. Real quick, I'll be as brief as I can in the interest of time. We've done some other projects in San Carlos, across the street, 671 and 677, the Pete's Building, the Poxies Building, some of the initial work on those projects. We did Tony's Restaurant, Pia Cherry, a number of years ago, 864 Laurel, Kinder Court, some other buildings as well. We specialize in downtown kind of mixed-use projects. This site is, I'd like to thank Jill Lewis also for her help in bringing this for you, before you tonight. I think we're familiar with the site. There's two mid-block parcels that comprise the project. Behind the project is the KB Homes Housing Project that's about to move forward soon. And we have sort of the zoning map that Jill had shown, and we're kind of in the middle of the mixed-use downtown, downtown core zone. The CoAmerica, this is the 644 Laurel project. This is the larger site, CoAmerica stays. There's sort of large windows, but kind of cluttered, deep recesses, some awnings, but to give you an idea, I feel like they're really heavy. First Impressions is actually going to be moving back into the building. And then the last, last shot here toward the end, Plantation Coffee, et cetera, give you an idea of the site. So our goals were to renovate the existing building, update its image, enhance the pedestrian, shopping, and dining experience along Laurel, reference existing street context, and provide a mixture of uses, which is the inspiration behind the second-floor office at this location. The site plan, showing the KB Home project behind the site, our project there, just to kind of give you some reference, located in blue. We blow it up. This is sensitive. We blow it up, Laurel Street at the bottom. The idea is to create lots of entry... The idea is to create lots of entries along the Laurel frontage, along with recesses, opportunities for seating, for dining, for someone to get off kind of the traveled way and look into the shops. On the south end is entrance to the office space, which will be above that parcel. These will remain two separate buildings. At the back of the project, or the site, rather, we have the landscaped area that Ms. Lewis explained. We have a grade change, so there's a ramp at the back and a stair that kind of gets you down from the parking plaza area into the one building. We have all the utilities for our project located at the back, including all of the interior, toilet room facilities, electrical rooms, trash enclosure is actually, there's no, I don't have a pointer, but is also located on the alley at the rear of the property. Second-floor office space, about 7,000 square feet. Again, we like to organize all the core on one side, so where that stair and entry is, we have an elevator to access the second floor, toilet core, rear stair at the back, and then lots of glass across the front looking out at Laurel, and then lots of glass along the rear of the project. There's also two small balconies for them to get outside if they want to look over Laurel, and that's what you see on the front left, bottom-left side, and then at the rear at the stair itself. Existing street frontage at Laurel is the top image, and I want to show you sort of the rhythm or the syncopation of the street that is something that is always important when working in these downtowns. There's about a 16-foot rhythm along the southern part, and then it kind of changes when it gets to the 660 building, a little bit larger format. There's recesses, canopies, and onto that I want to lay the new project and sort of show how we've developed the rhythm of that building as well through the articulation of the windows with sort of a primary grid and a secondary grid, as well as the articulation of the brick facade on the second floor and columns on the ground floor. The materials, the back of the building is handled in a similar way. You can see the street or the planting, as well as the windows that are for the office space, and then the stairs on the right-hand side. The materials include brick on the facade. We're kind of picking up on the Tivoli Building on the Wells Fargo Bank next door. We felt it was important to kind of bring those in as sort of a contextual relationship. The stair on the left is the office entry, and that's going to be clad in a rainscreen parklex system. The windows are a silver color, deep recesses. There's a material board in front of you, so it's a rich palette of materials, real brick. The glass is both clear and sort of a frit glass or a silkscreen glass at the interstitial floor space. We have glass canopies that hang off the building to give the two-story building a contextual relationship, but also a sort of a modern kind of feel. The building next door, the one-story building, we're going to take the cement plaster off that building. We're going to sandblast it, we're going to reveal the concrete. We're going to then install a steel frame that will help kind of brace that building and sort of feature that as the Sneakers Restaurant. The dining area there will have a nanoglass wall that completely opens up. Sort of the restaurant will spill out to that area and create some activity on the street. And then to the right of the restaurant space will be another retail space, again contributing to sort of that rhythm of the street. The two sides of the building are also articulated, the south elevation below. Two windows that are on the property line, they're always difficult to do, but we're able to do that with some special fire-rated glass. And then the same thing on the north elevation, a little bit more windows there because we don't have the core along that side of the building. And some 3D views, this is from the south looking. The first part of the image there is the office entry with the glass canopies, the parklex siding. You see the brick of the two-story building, the canopies, as well as the recesses. And then beyond, we have the restaurant building, and I think I'm going to come around to the other side of the restaurant building. You can see the dining out in front, as well as the retail building here that'll have a beautiful tile base and a large storefront window. The glass on the ground floors is all clear, but joined to glass, so there'll be great visibility into the space. I look forward to your questions, if any, and your support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant right now? I don't have any speaker cards. Does anybody want to speak on this matter? Is everybody just tired? Why don't you come up here? We're being televised right now, so.
Brian Kimmel, once again. We have the music store, it's just on the corner there, and I just want to know, right now we're seeing less walk traffic where we are. How long is this project proposed? Yeah.
I think it's approximately nine months for us to build.
The construction project, subject to receipt of permit, takes approximately nine months to build the shell improvements, and then the tenants will take another 90 to 120 days, approximately, to finish their tenant improvements. We're trying to synchronize with the Wheeler Plaza project, and so we're working with them on utilities and kind of how the parking structure evolves. But it's roughly a 12-month project from issuance of permit. We are fully leased, which is interesting. We have basically all the tenant spaces leased, and so we are quite motivated just to move the project along. Yeah, so approximately 12 months.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
It's not a question so much as a comment. I think because I did most of my studying on the smaller rendering, I was under the impression the brick would be more red than it appears on the board. Thank you. I just, I think red brick would blend better with Tivoli and seems to be more coherent, but I'm curious why you guys decided to go with beige brick.
I think the idea there is if you look at the Wells Fargo Building, or further down the street, there's a building on the corner, one block down from Cherry, that's a similar color brick. And so I think what was important is the scale of the material, not necessarily the color, so we're not trying to be the Tivoli Building, like another red brick building mid-block, and thought that this sort of tan color was a little bit more of a current sort of, you know, take on the brick facade.
Thank you.
I prefer it a lot more than the terracotta, but thank you.
Yellow.
Yellow, no, don't.
Not going to lie, I prefer, I prefer red in my brick, but I understand that I'm usually alone on these things.
Mostly on the design, yeah.
Mostly on every design element and color.
Craftsman Homes. Anyone else?
So, I have a couple of things to talk about. The first one is, you talked about an alternative landscaping plan. The building's required to have 10% of the landscaping, 10% of the space landscape. I couldn't come even close to 10%. So what's your alternative plan?
So the alternative plan was something that has not yet been discussed with staff. As, when we got the staff report is when that came about. So I imagine that we'll be discussing with Planner Lewis in the next few weeks how to do that. We have an existing site. The building is improved all the way to the sidewalk. John and I talked about other ways of introducing plant material. We have a grade change at the back, so we have to put a stair in, and we have to put a really long ramp in to get down to the one building. So that eats up some space where you could put trees. I would think we could add a tree if we needed to, and the presentation is off right now, but there's two trees at the rear.
Yeah.
And then there's a space that is just kind of a landscaped area between the two trees, the two sets of trees, and there's a potential that we could add another crape myrtle at that location. But I was unaware of that until I got the staff report.
Okay.
Now I'm a little confused, because looking at the staff report, the reason for the alternative landscape plan is not because they're not able to meet the landscaping requirement, it's because of the amount of paving they have. According to the staff report, they're going to provide 15% of landscaping at Laurel and 12% at the other, well, at 644, and another 12% at 668. So are they, I mean, now I'm confused, are they providing the landscaping or not?
I think I.
Yes, I think you are absolutely correct. We are in excess of the 10% minimum landscape. The problem is we have too much paving, and it's modest, we have 2% more paving. But the real issue behind this site is that there's a 3%, there's about a 3-foot grade change from the floor to the rear of the property, and all of the parking at Wheeler Plaza needs to have handicap accessibility into the back of the building, so we are forced to. And actually, it's absolutely necessary for us to put in an extended handicap ramp and the stairs, where otherwise there would be landscaping. The trade-off is you have direct handicap accessibility to the Wheeler Plaza parking lot.
But I think you're reading the zoning ordinance differently than it states, which is that.
Which would not be the first time.
Right. I'm not saying, but minimum amount of landscaping, percent of site, 10%, okay? Now, we had this discussion in the past with other projects, and 10% landscaping doesn't mean 8% paving and 2% landscaping. It's 10% landscaping. The other question I have for staff is, when did trees in the public right-of-way become part of landscaping of a project?
I'll go ahead and start, maybe Jill can answer the second question. In terms of the minimum amount of landscaping, that is correct. That is a requirement that's in our code. Further into the landscaping ordinance section, there are provisions to do alternatives to these requirements, and then there's, and there's also certain criteria that is utilized to determine whether or not an alternative landscape plan can be approved. And at the bottom of page four of your staff report, Jill has included criteria numbers 1, 4, and at the top of page 5, 6. So this is criteria that the planning commission can choose to use in order to approve, to, you know, make the findings or support the alternative landscape plan that's proposed here.
Okay, so I'm not sure any of these really apply, do they?
Well, let's look at, well, number one is pretty general. I mean, innovative use of plant materials and design techniques in response to unique characteristics of the site. So the site is downtown, it's with an urbanized area. We have, we see a pattern of trees along Laurel Street, really not so much of landscaping right on the property, so that's something that we can take into consideration as we look at an alternative landscape plan. Number four is integrating landscaping and pedestrian facilities in a manner that improves access or incorporates pedestrian-friendly design. Without, maybe the applicant can respond, or the architect can respond to this, but I would assume the reason why they didn't put any landscaping in the front is because they really want to encourage and promote that pedestrian-friendly frontage with the hardscaping in the front, and, you know, utilizing the benefit of the street trees that were already in place. And then number six has to do with compatibility of surrounding uses, so taking cues from some of the other landscaping and the way that the projects meet the sidewalk and the street in a downtown setting.
So is there any project on either side that has landscaping?
I don't believe so.
So how can you, how can it be compatible with landscaping on either side if there's no landscaping?
That is the request, I believe, that's being made to utilize the alternative.
There are street trees on both sides of this property, as there are street trees in front of this property, so at the front of the building, it's consistent with the context of the neighboring properties. At the back of the building, it's all asphalt right now, and if you want landscaping, you know, we're providing landscaping at the back. We think the KB Homes Wheeler Plaza project is going to be one that's going to benefit from that as well as us, but we can't extend to the Wells Fargo property, which is parking lot, basically, and that's how they access some of their parking in their driveway. It's brought to my, it's been brought to my attention that, you know, we're trying to create this outdoor seating area on our, in front of the restaurant project. That hardscape, if you will, has been counted as paving. And in fact, it would have been building area, but for we've sort of taken the building wall away and opened all that up, and now we're being, it would be penalizing us to create that seating area.
You're confusing paving with landscaping, okay?
Well, it looks like, are we not over on landscaping?
No. It requires 10% of the site to be landscaped, and what you've got is 12% of paving, okay? You're confusing paving with landscaping. What the zoning ordinance says is that you need 10% of the property landscaped, okay? You can't count brick as landscape.
It's accurate of paving, so sometimes it is.
What I was expecting was an alternative plan for landscaping. Now, whether that be you provide trees that are going to be planted somewhere else in the city, some sort of mechanism by which you make up for the lack of 10% of landscaping on this site, because that's what's required under the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine. I'm still confused when I read this. It says 15% on 644 Laurel of landscaping calculated by staff, and that's not right then.
Right. And that's the difference between what staff is counting as landscaping and what I'm looking at and saying, you can't count brick pavers as landscaping.
Okay, assuming that's what they've done.
So then can I get a clarification on that? Is Scott reading it right? Lisa?
I'm going to have Jill dive into this because she's been looking at the project more closely than I, but, you know, without, I guess I would be repeating myself, but the code does allow for an alternative landscape plan to deviate from that, just.
That's what I'm asking for, is if they're not going to provide 10% onsite, where are they going to provide the additional landscaping?
So because the landscaping requirements do afford some amount of hardscape along with the plant material, that overall percentage requirement, you can deviate within that mix through an alternative plan if the decision-making body decides that criteria 1, 4, and 6 are satisfied. So it allows some flexibility, most probably for settings like this. But I think there was a clarification on the percentage required versus what's onsite. Are they over or under, so.
Would you mind clarifying that for me, Jill?
Sure. So the rear landscaping does count towards the landscaping requirement. And then they're asking for just an excessive amount, or not excessive, but an amount of paving to be included as part of that.
And would the actual landscape in the back be 10%? Am I doing the math right there?
No, it would not be.
Okay. And so then Scott, to clarify, what you're asking for is for them to contribute to another percentage.
I think somehow we need to make up that 10% of landscaping.
Sorry, I'm just trying to follow you.
I don't have a problem with the project, but I was expecting an alternate landscaping plan that's something like, we're going to donate six trees to the city to be planted in a park somewhere. Just some way of sort of compensating for additional landscaping that's not onsite.
Okay, I'm following you now. Thank you.
I guess I have a comment. It's a building owner owning multiple buildings on Laurel Street. I actually think this project, if you look at it, provides more landscaping than virtually any other project I've ever seen on Laurel Street. So the 10% criteria isn't being complied by any building. And what I might propose, I think pedestrian, the pedestrian scape needs to have accessibility and walkability and seating. I mean, you know, Sneakers is planning on outdoor dining. The retailers are looking to have some recess to put outside facilities. One thing we could do, Scott, is we could add planters along the frontage, pots with plants in them. But if you look at the plan, there's just absolutely no way to get a 10% landscape plan onsite.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that that's what's in the zoning ordinance, and we've run into this in other projects, and more recently in residential areas where somebody came in and said, you know, I got 5% landscaping and 10% paving, okay? And what we did is we tried to put as many trees in there as possible. I was, that's what I was expecting, with something like that.
With pots along the front with, with plants?
For me personally, I'd love to see something that is done in such a way that it prevents the outside diners from blocking the sidewalk, okay? And I don't know how you go about doing that, whether, whether there's, you know, but that's a pet peeve of mine.
We did it at Cross the Street Apaches, right, where we actually put in a hard planter.
Exactly, yes.
But that is effectively a potted plant. We could extend the planting in pots along the frontage. I'm a little adverse to creating barriers, but we can certainly put plants in, in pots along the frontage. But if you just look at the site, I mean, we are constrained by the site itself, right?
I'm not, but it's a guideline that I'm trying to say needs to start being followed because it is part of our zoning ordinance. And what we've done is all along, we've kind of ignored it, okay? And we haven't really said that, you know, anything needs to be done.
So Scott, would you prefer that they put some, some potted plants in front? Would that be what's satisfying?
I would be much happier with that than the way it is right now.
Okay.
That would be our intent, and we will, if you'd like us, we can submit that to the staff.
And I'm happy to let staff do that, but I just, I just think in the future we need to maximize the landscaping as much as we can on these projects.
We will absolutely commit to staff to provide an alternative plan that shows decorative plants in pots along the frontage.
Thank you.
Yes. I mean, I think it's a good addition to the project. It was an intended addition, anyway. We just didn't...
Not a problem. And the second issue I have with the project is really the lack of parking spaces and the money that's there. And my feeling is that that absolutely has to go towards transit passes for the employees that are there. And I don't know how long that will last, but as, as much as possible, I think that the employees, since there is essentially no parking other than the street parking in front, we need to have some sort of transit pass piece of this.
I was also concerned about the fewer parking spaces, though I was going to let Jesse roll with that. Though, of course, we are right behind the new Wheeler Plaza, which is adding more spaces. That doesn't mean it all goes to them, of course. I'm just, I just wanted to point that out.
What I'm saying is I think that money ought to go for transit passes for the employees rather than to pay for additional parking spaces, which have already been paid for, in theory.
I have to admit, I'm surprised the parking and lufies aren't higher, quite frankly.
I don't think, you know, you may be able to get the developer to agree to transit passes, which I think probably could care less considering the cost of this development. But I don't think we have any control over where the parking and lufies are spent. That, that's city money. That's not our bailiwick.
I was just thinking the same thing, that, that's, the parking in lufy is designed for that. And the staff report does say it could be used for that, but that would have to be a city program that could provide for transit fees in some way.
And like the Mr. Rubens agreeing with me, I change my position.
I'll do another 180.
So, so the last parking study we did, I thought we were doing a parking study.
We did a parking study.
And it didn't update any of those numbers because, I mean, we're using it from 1999.
We had like 2012.
And cost of living.
I think the parking study is completely unrelated to the setting the parking and lufies, but again, I would defer to city staff. I'm getting tired.
And I was talking to staff earlier about just some, some general background about the parking for this property. There is an entitlement that exists in the public parking plaza now that's going to be replaced with the new Wheeler Plaza, if I'm not mistaken. So the parking is just for the office that they're adding above, so that's what's triggering the in-lufy. So it's not the whole project. It's just that part of it doesn't meet the parking requirements in this new office component. Because there already is, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but there was the assessment district and there's some credit for the existing parking situation there.
Well, in fact, I think to provide a little bit of context on, there's two separate buildings here, but it's been under same ownership for almost 50 years. And you have 644 Laurel, which, based on its prior uses relative to its current uses, actually is using five less parking spaces. And then you have 62 Laurel, where we're adding the office space, which has nine more required spaces. So actually, the net parking for the two buildings is only four spaces. But under the code, unless we merge the parcels, we can't get that offset. So really, the net change in parking for this combined project is the, is four additional spaces based on the proposed future uses. But we are paying for nine in-luf spaces because we're not prepared to merge the parcels. So in some respects, the city is getting the benefit of the bargain here because we're paying for nine spaces, but we really only have a true net deficit of four spaces for the two combined parcels. And so that's kind of the history in terms of, of the credits in the district.
Can we get an updated study? So last time I checked, cost of living's not always the best, especially in San Carlos, you know, in the last five years.
We're now at 11. I'm exhausted. I have court in the morning. So I don't want to rush people, but if, then I'm going to move to continue at this point.
Well, I move to extend, oh, yeah, go ahead. And then I'll make a motion afterwards if it fails to continue, to move that we continue the meeting to 11:15.
Why don't we informally just get a quick idea as to how much time, if, Angela?
I can go to 11:15.
I can do 11:15.
Are we actually going to finish at 11:15? I think that's the, that's the attempt. Okay. Yeah, so is there a motion?
I move to extend the meeting to 11:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
No.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thirteenth Amendment.
Okay, so any other, there was nobody else speaking, so any other questions for the applicant? Do we want to get into, want to close the public hearing? Get into the nitty-gritty?
So before we close it, and since the applicant is standing up there, how do you feel about transit passes and subsidized transit passes for employees?
I think the way that we would approach this is that we, we will pay the in-lufy of $171,000 to the city, and we would support your recommendations, the city set up some kind of transit pass system. Frankly, it's virtually impossible for us to manage it with eight separate tenants and multiple employees who are changing all the time. But we absolutely would support if you want to use our $171,000 for transit passes.
Now I'm getting cranky. I think they're only talking about the one office space and offering transit passes to the people using the office space, not all eight of your tenants. I'm sure that you could manage that if you wanted to. I'm quite confident of that.
Yeah, we actually don't take that kind of role in managing our tenants. I mean, we, we just, we built the 90 condominiums and the same thing came down there. We just simply don't manage our tenants to that level, forcing them to buy transit passes or not buy transit passes. What, what we would encourage is that staff use $171,000 for transit passes.
This doesn't force them to use or not use transit passes. It just subsidizes an employee who does want to use transit.
But is landlord subsidizing that, or is the tenant, is the tenant managing, subsidizing passes for their employees?
How do we normally do it?
I think normally, the way we've done these passes, we have a single applicant who's proposing to put a business in, typically through a use permit or something like that. And I think what I'd recommend is that we have like a, maybe a condition that they cooperate with the city's, any program the city develops for transit passes. And then if, and then if that happens, they, we will have the ability to get cooperation.
Okay, it's in.
Okay.
Potted plants are in, cooperate with city on transit is in. Sorry, don't mean to be bossy.
Not a problem.
I, have we closed public comment?
Not yet.
Not yet? Oh, wait, wait.
I hope sensibilities are offended.
One last thing. The restaurant, wood burning fire?
No.
No.
It's actually Steve Salazar with Sneakers Restaurant is planning to relocate from its existing location. He's here to answer questions. No wood burning fire.
Perfect.
With that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. Okay, any additional comments, questions, suggestions, modifications?
I don't know if they can change or not. I have a problem with just amassing of this two-story building. It looks very industrial to me and flat. And I know that there was a 3D rendering in there, but it still looked very, everything looked very, very flat. And I, it's such a key area in our downtown. I think we want to see something that was more articulated. But that's, that's my opinion.
So this is design review, so pretty, pretty important.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, I was thinking it looked very, very, very modern, a little bit out of the character. I don't know whether you want to call it the amassing or what, but that was my impression as well. I wasn't going to...
You know what would make it less modern? Red brick. She does not want to see it. And red brick would be so much more traditional. Problem solved. I'm going to put that in.
So can we go back to that rendering?
So the facade, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, is not flat in any, in any regard. The window system itself has an eight-inch deep frame, which is unlike most that you would see. Do I have the controller? Yeah, I have it here. So the, the frames themselves that are white in this, in this rendering, they're really silver, are, are eight inches deep, so you're going to get a good shadow line, the same thing at the rear. And the reason we went with a deeper frame is because we're concerned about the sun at the rear of the building. And so having a deeper frame will give you some shading aspect to it. And then for consistency, we brought that around to the front. The ground floor is set back four and a half feet. You've got the canopies that project out. And, and then the detail of the, of the steel kind of columns coming down that help define that, that syncopation. I think it's a, a, sort of a very light and refreshing look for San Carlos. And...
You want red brick, we'll give you red brick. If that solves the...
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have to respectfully disagree with John on this one and agree with the architect. And I, and I rarely do this, but in, with respect to the commissioner as well.
Let me solve this. Angela, can it be red mortar between the brick?
Can we go with terracotta, please?
There's actually two colors of brick. There's the beige, and then there's a striped, and then there's a chocolate.
A chocolate, I saw that. Yeah, I do like the chocolate. Al, I'd be interested in hearing what you have to say. I just think it would, in addition to me just liking it better, I do think it would make it look less modern because red brick is more traditional. Am I, am I missing the aesthetic there?
Well, we thought the same thing, and what I think is, gosh. We took a look at this very carefully, and we were concerned about, one, the contemporary nature of the building, but we believe that the texture and the color of this brick will actually lighten the building up. If, if you went with a darker color like you have at the entry feature there, it will look very, very heavy on that side of the street. And it's a fairly large rectangular feature, and the largest feature of that building. And it would, it would sort of dominate the landscape as opposed to sort of blending in and providing a nice, God, I'm losing my train of thought this late at night, but it would just be real heavy, I think. And so we did look at a bunch of different things. And we also think that the thing that warms it up from the contemporary nature of the architectural style is the warmth of the materials that are being used. So there's a balance there between the square linear appearance of, and lines of the building. But when you look at this brick, it's actually very warm. I'm afraid if you went darker, again, it would be too heavy. The other thing we looked at is like the wood, the red wood at the entry there, the red entry to the office building is actually a wood. And so the warmth of the materials is a counterbalance to the style of the architecture. You know, our downtown, if you look at the buildings themselves, there, there's really no style to them on that side of the block. There's not much of a style at all. They're basically boxes, if you look at it. This is a huge improvement in the style of architecture and the warmth of the materials and the scale, how everything's brought down to the pedestrian scale. So I'm really concerned with going with much darker than what you have there.
I agree with what Al said.
So, so Al, your concern is that being darker would, would make it feel more, more massive?
More massive. The size and scale of the building would then draw the, the whole eye. Everything on that side of the block would be, you know, sucked into that structure. And then everything else around it would fall away and be more insignificant.
Then, I guess, because I want to, I want to believe. So explain, explain to me why Tivoli doesn't feel like super massive and out of character.
Well, we've all gotten used to it, and, and, you know, there's nothing...
There's nothing wrong with red brick. Unless you've got a building next door that's about the same size. Didhams is about the same size as Tivoli.
Yeah, in terms of the width and the scale and amassing of those two buildings together, I don't think there's anything wrong with the, I like the Tivoli building. We've all grown used to it over the years. But I think this is a separate block. And it's unnecessary to match what happened at the Tivoli building. This is a separate block. It's a new block. It's in. So I think it's okay to go this direction. We spent a tremendous amount of time on, you know, going through each detail, iteration after iteration. And we came to this, the use of this particular color in the brick, very carefully. So I want you to know at least that a lot of thought and effort went into this on all parties.
Okay.
And the bricks are actually an unusual-sized brick. They're thinner and longer. They're a Roman brick, so they don't look as heavy as a traditional face brick.
Yeah, so again, I think that, that using this brick is going to, it'll be warm. It won't feel as contemporary as the, as the drawing appears. And if you go, again, if you go darker, it's going to be real heavy there.
Okay, so dark isn't the solution. I think, I think we've established I'm probably the only one that had a strong feeling in that way. But, but both Commissioner Silverman and Commissioner Bergman have a concern...
I'm still feeling this is very, it does not feel...
Concerned with the modernness, right?
Yeah, yeah. To me, I mean, the left corner there, I think that articulation there, I like the back corner, the left corner, I think is really good, but then it just, it just, there's nothing else after that. And it just really feels very industrial to me, and maybe I'm just not a fan of modern, but I just, I just would have a hard time with this being a showpiece of the downtown, the way it stands.
I like the design quite a bit.
I'm on the opposite end of that. I mean, the, the other side of the street is, has gone, has been transformed as well. And, you know, you have, the CoAmerica Building is the own, is the newest building on that block, really. I mean, and that's not even, I mean, it's, that's beige. I know you love beige. But to me, at least, I, I see a consistent flow here. I mean, it is, if, if you were not a fan of modern, then, then you're probably not going to like this design. But I see, I see some...
not going to like this design, but I see, I see some traditional elements to it as well. I mean, I mean, so, I mean, I like the design.
And just to jump in, the other side of the street, if you look at Patchies, Patchies is a very contemporary-looking facade, but it doesn't feel that way because they use rusted metal, right, which is a warm material. They sandblasted the outside of the building, and so while the building is actually just a rectangle and it has some inset metal at the top, the warmth of those natural materials warms the building up, and it blends in with our downtown. It becomes like part of the, the trees, you know, the, the natural features of the, of the materials blend with the natural environment. And so it doesn't, it, it, it's not old-school, traditional, but it's not super contemporary, and it's warm at the same time. And so that's what we were going for here, I think, and some of the, for instance, going to a comment that was, it kind of drops off, right, at that other side, and if you could switch really quick, Ken, to a more street-on facade, yeah. So see the metal around the edge of the, the, the box there, right? That is going to be that rusted metal. So it's going to be that warm, natural feel. It's not going to be some, you know, shiny, you know, metal that looks sort of plastic or something like that. And the building has a texture to it, doesn't it, Ken? I mean, the...
The restaurant building?
Yeah, the, the, the concrete actually has a texture, right?
The concrete is actually sandblasted so that you'll expose the aggregate, and you'll get pox, and it'll have an interesting, yeah, texture to it.
So you get the stone and the metal, which is, you know, a very warm, natural feature, even though it's a rectangular building, just like Patchies is.
So...
It's 11:14.
It's now 11:15. I'm just, I'm concerned. You know, this is a very significant portion of downtown San Carlos, and I just feel like we're rushing it. I mean, I appreciate making decisions, I love making decisions. I mean, I can't, I've been up for 18 hours now. I, I can't, I just, I don't think that, I don't think we should vote, but, I mean, if you folks want to extend, I'll, I'll sit here.
Other staff, I mean...
If I vote today, if I vote today, it's a vote for no. So if, I, I don't really think, I, 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 yeah, I think we should continue it.
So we've got 45 minutes into this, and we're going to continue, okay? Is that, Angela, what do you, what are you, what are you feeling?
Well, you, you don't like the design, so...
You're, you're running out of time to do anything, so I think you should make a motion to extend a minute or two so you can formulate this.
Move to extend by five minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson? Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
And I don't mean to interject myself, but the proper course of action, if you're going to continue, would be to reopen the public hearing and then continue it to a date certain.
Move to open the public hearing?
You can do it in one motion, too.
All right, well, what do you guys think? Do you have a date certain in mind? Is the 20th a date certain?
Staff can reschedule it for the 20th, and we'll adjust the other items on our agenda accordingly.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm okay with that. It'll give the applicant an opportunity to bring back the plan for the potters, the pots.
Okay. Then I, I move that we reopen the public hearing and continue the item to a date certain, June 20th.
A second.
Kind of a roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Gutierrez?
Yes. So, reports on recent city council actions?
None for this evening.
Planning commission comments or reports?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me either. Anyone else? Correspondence, just planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
Just a reminder that our next meeting will be a special meeting with the planning commission on Wednesday, June 15th. This is when we'll, staff will be continuing the discussion for the Meridian 25 Office Park. Again, that's Wednesday, June 15th, regular meeting time, 7:00 PM. Thereafter, our next meeting will be on June 20th, regular meeting time.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Good luck tomorrow, man.
Thanks.
Yeah, good luck tomorrow.